Good afternoon, everyone. It's five o'clock on Tuesday, March 5th, and I would like to call to order the St. Croix County Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with Father John, who I'm sure will have some words of wisdom for us.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity always to offer a prayer at the beginning of your meeting. As we gather this evening, we certainly join our friends and our neighbors and remember our members of our law enforcement community. We certainly pray in gratitude for the important work that they do, for all of the first responders who put their lives at risk every time the alarm sounds. We certainly pray in remembering those who have died serving us, protecting us, caring for us. Certainly, the police officers recently over in the Twin Cities, the paramedic who died with them, for our own Deputy Katie who died. We certainly pray for Sheriff Scott Knudsen and all those who serve with him in protecting us and serving us. And as you gather this evening for an important meeting, just like to offer this prayer. "We stand before you, Holy Spirit, as we gather together in your name, with you alone to guide us. Make yourself at home in our hearts. Teach us the way we must go and how we are to pursue it. We are weak and sinful; do not let us promote disorder. Do not let ignorance lead us down the wrong path, nor partiality influence our actions. Let us find in you our unity so that we may journey together to eternal life and not stray from the way of truth and what is right. All this we ask of you who are at work in every place and time in the communion of the Father and the Son forever and ever. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. Before we get to our presentation on our agenda, I would like to have the opportunity to make some comments to everyone in the board. Basically, I would like to address the elephant in the room. Kind of all know who that is, don't we?
I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I'd like to address some comments on the issue of the refugee resettlement. So the first thing I want to mention is that I know we have a lot of interested people here. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we will maintain decorum in the meeting, we will maintain respect, and we will allow people to voice their opinions and make sure that we do not have any personal attacks. The next thing I'd like to do is to thank everyone very sincerely for not only your presence here tonight, but all the emails and the phone conversations and messages that we've gotten over the last couple of weeks. I want you to know it's very important what you're doing. We do read your emails, we do take your opinions into consideration, and I think I can say that on behalf of everyone on the board, and your input is really important. So thank you for your input, thank you for your feedback. So we're following a process in this whole issue, and I'd like to describe this process for you. And basically, I will take full responsibility for this process, so if you don't like it and you want to be mad at somebody, I'm your guy, okay? So this process basically is out of respect, respect for every supervisor on this board. I firmly believe that it's critical that we have the opportunity to be educated on these types of issues before we take any action, particularly this type of issue that's very complex. And further, I think it's critical that we have the opportunity then to have a meaningful and thoughtful discussion on the issue so that we can then determine what's the best way forward for St. Croix County. And we will do that tonight. We will have an educational presentation. The very first item in our business items is that discussion where we will have the opportunity to talk about this issue and really decide what's going to be best for us. As a result of that process and that discussion, we will provide Corporation Council with feedback on what really should be included in what I'd like to call an action plan, but in the form of a resolution that we feel is going to be appropriate moving forward for our county. That resolution then will be forwarded to everyone on the board for your consideration, and we will reconvene this board in, I'd like to say a couple of days, but it'll probably be a week based on the notice requirements. We will consider that resolution and we will vote on it. So in the end, it's as simple as that. We will have a resolution and we will have the opportunity to vote on it. And I'm sorry, but I will not be bullied into forcing a vote on a resolution from some other county before we've had the opportunity to discuss this issue in a meaningful way. I believe that that's unfair to all of you supervisors. So we will follow the process tonight, and we will not vote, but we will have a resolution and we will vote. And for all of you who were demanding that we force a vote tonight, we will not vote on a resolution tonight, but guess what? It's not the end of the world. We need a couple of days. We need a couple more days to make sure that we're following a logical process, that we can determine what's going to be best for the future of St. Croix County regarding this particular issue. So we will get it done. We will get it done in short order. So I hope that, I know we have a tremendous pile of requests for public comment, and that's good, I appreciate that, but I hope you will keep in the back of your mind or consider the fact that we are going to have a resolution in a couple of days, and we are going to have the opportunity to vote on it within a week. So with that, I asked for your patience, and I ask for your understanding so that we can move ahead as a board and reach consensus and decide the best way forward for St. Croix Thank you for listening. We're going to move ahead with our agenda, which we have a presentation. Administrator Witt, would you like to introduce this?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So tonight, we have Benjamin York with the State of Wisconsin Bureau of Refugee Programs. He's going to go over a PowerPoint presentation that he's prepared, so you can go ahead and screen share if you like, Mr. York. And now you can unmute and start your presentation. We look forward to it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Let me get this screen share started. So typically, I do these presentations in person, and I get to ask and see faces if you can hear me okay, but maybe if someone could just respond. Can you hear me okay? How's the audio? I got a thumbs up here. Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you. So thank you very much, Mr. Witt, and Mr. Chairperson, and to all the members of the board, and to anyone else in attendance or listening in. I'm thrilled to be here. This is an opportunity that I don't get to take advantage of very often, which is to go around and speak to people who are interested in learning more about refugee resettlement, regardless of what our opinions may be or what our background information may be. It's always fun for me to deliver these sorts of conversations. I'm a former high school teacher at heart, and so I've had all sorts of different degrees of agreement and participation in audiences, and I'm used to it. I also was a former middle school football and basketball coach, so I'm comfortable in about any audience you put me in front of. So with that said, though, I also tend to talk a lot. I'm going to try to minimize that to every extent possible. I know I've been given about 30 minutes here today between the presentation and Q and A, so I'll tell you, I've got about 33 slides I would usually present. I will skip around a little bit to just present the things that I think are most valuable for you to understand, as I've been informed of some of the conversations and questions that have come up previously. So as was said, my name is Ben York, and I do work for the State of Wisconsin in our Department of Children and Families and our Bureau of Refugee Programs. My specific role is I manage the Refugee Programs section. That is the only section within the Bureau, at least as of today. So I oversee all of the day-to-day operations of all that our state government does to support refugee resettlement programs across the state. Now, I'd like to start by just informing you on what that means. So for us, we essentially operate social programs that support legally admitted and eligible refugees to receive services related to a whole host of services. I'm going to come back and circle back to that message at the end of my presentation here and give you some more detail, but I want you to know sort of who I am and what we do. So the admittance of refugees, the approval for a refugee to enter the United States happens through a different team. It's through the federal government, and I'll get into that more as well, but I think it's nice to set that sort of role and scope right up front. So speaking of setting up roles and scopes, I want to talk a little bit about who a refugee is, which may be just as important. We'll talk about who a refugee isn't. So the definition of a refugee was established through the United Nations, and this is a legally protected status. Much of what we speak about, hear about, and the way that we use the term refugee, I would describe as having a little R in front of it, being an informal designation, whereas refugee is actually a protected legal designation. And that definition of a refugee, as you see here on the screen, is a person who is outside of their country of origin, and they are unable or unwilling to return home because of a well-founded fear of persecution or actual experience of persecution. So persecution in this case is limited to these five specific criteria. So it's persecution due to membership of a particular race, religion, nationality, social group, or political opinion. So you might hear terms like climate refugee or other types of uses of the word refugee. That doesn't actually apply for this protected legal group. So what our team does here and our area of expertise applies to just this one legally protected definition of refugee, that is the actual legal definition of refugee, though it's often used in many contexts. So I want to talk a little bit about what options refugees have so that you know what alternatives there may be when refugee resettlement isn't available. So the first option, the option that almost every individual would choose to pursue if they could, certainly if I was forced to flee home. I live in Milwaukee now, I used to live in Minneapolis, never had the privilege of living in your county or in Hudson, but I've traveled in and around it many times for various presentations and for just personal fun. But if I were to have to leave home today... But if I were to have to leave home today, my first option likely wouldn't be to ask to be resettled in Canada or Sweden or Australia or some other place. It would be to come home. So voluntary repatriation to the home country is always the first option that people might pursue. The second option could be permanent resettlement in a neighboring country. So if I were forced to flee home and I went to move to Canada, that would likely be my second choice. And that's the most common second option that people pursue. That's the most common second thing that actually occurs for folks. Also, I should double check. I see some activity around the podium. Can you still hear and see me okay? Should I pause? Okay, I saw a knot. I'll, I'll keep on rolling. If you need to cut me off, feel free to do so. So that brings us to the last option and the option here that uh, is probably most interesting to you all, which would be resettlement in a third country such as the United States. So I want to talk a little bit about how that process works so that you can see sort of the different players involved. So first up, as I mentioned earlier, resettlement is a federal process. According to the United States Constitution, immigration is a federal right, not a state right. And so this is again where the state of Wisconsin has involvement through social programs that support ref- support refugees once they arrive. The federal government establishes how many refugees can legally arrive each year and where they're eventually resettled to. Also, there's some control over where a refugee might be allowed in, depending on where they come from. But ultimately, that's a federal right. And so specifically, that process is guided through the State Department, through the US Department of Homeland Security and Department of Health and Human Services. They co-deliver a US Refugee Admissions Program. Within that program, each year, the federal government through different processes, but typically Congress makes a recommendation to the Secretary of State or vice versa. That recommendation is then ratified by the President. But each year, the United States declares if we will resettle refugees and if so, how many? And then depending on that, how many, where they might come from. Every other country in the world also does a similar process to this. So something just to take note of on this slide, uh, you may be familiar with a program that happened back in 2021 into 2022 called Operation Allies Welcome. And this is a case in which a separate program was created in a specific special situation related to Afghanistan in which the government of Afghanistan fell as the Taliban took over. And there were considerable numbers of people who had supported the US government and US military, both directly and US military interests overseas that were then provided safe haven, literal safe haven, they were taken to places in our country called safe havens because of that support of US military interests and, and US interests. And so sometimes there are additional processes, but basically it's this US Refugee Admissions Program that we're here to speak about. Okay, so one of the more, I think, important points to note is that through this federal process, there is a series of background checks, security checks, health checks, and overall clearance that must be obtained before a person can actually enter the United States as a refugee. And so um, in average timeline from what we're told through both the federal government and refugees who enter Wisconsin themselves, the absolute fastest we see this take is typically around six months. Now again, that Operation Allies Welcome was a different kind of evacuation path. It really wasn't refugee resettlement. I would put that in a different sort of bucket. So typically, the fastest refugee resettlement might take to go through security checks and background clearances through these various federal agencies is about six months. More commonly, it might take two years or even up to three years is a relatively common scenario we see. So again, for me, if I were to flee Canada, that's quite some time to have to sort of sit in limbo and wait and try to learn and understand where might I go? Where are my options to be safe and to, to start a new life here? So I, I won't read through all the different various federal teams that are involved in that clearance process. You can see them on the screen here, I think. I will tell you that we have on good authority from the federal government, specifically the US Citizenship and Immigration Services that, um, not anecdotally, that there is objective evidence to show that refugees are the most vetted, background screened and checked immigrant to come into the United States. It's just simply the most rigorous process to go through the various degrees of background checking that you might see here on the screen and that refugees endure. So, once a person does go through that screening, uh, there are one of primarily two ways that they may resettle. This slide didn't use to be here. This is a relatively new process. So on the left side, there's the previous typical traditional model and the traditional pathway, which is through resettlement agencies, which is, I think, why we're having this conversation today. Something else to note though is that there is also an alternative pathway through something called Welcome Corps that you may or may not be familiar with. The basic difference between the two, and this will let me skip a few slides for you, is that the traditional model through resettlement agencies provides a specific typically nonprofit organization or an organization otherwise contracted with the federal government to provide a list of required services over a certain period of time, usually it's at least 30 days, up to 90 days, with then referral for ongoing services. Again, through that formal brick and mortar building with case managers and paid staff that are experts in this process. The new alternative on the right side there is Welcome Corps. And that is where if five people in your room right now wanted to get together and raise your hands and sign up and say, we would like to sponsor a refugee or a refugee family to come to our community, you could do that. And that's in addition to, not in replacement of the traditional pathway. And that alternative pathway of Welcome Corps still requires a similar list of required services that must be provided. There's a requirement to gather funds, to privately raise funds, to make sure that people are supported. But it's a new pathway that can also exist regardless of whether or not a refugee resettlement agency exists in your service area. So this is something else to note. And in both cases, again, these models are administered through the federal government. I will say that while the state of Wisconsin does not have control over refugee resettlement locations, people admitted, numbers per se, we do have considerable influence. So that is to say that we want to take any concerns very seriously from any local area to understand, does an area have capacity to ensure that people are well cared for? We and every step, every person involved in this process want to ensure that people are well supported as they arrive. And we think that's the case in most communities across Wisconsin. Wisconsin as a whole certainly has been a very welcoming state for refugees and has a wonderful history of it. But of course, context changes. Things happen and this is something that we always want to be aware of. So I do want to make you aware that we have the opportunity to influence, but not control where people go or how many might arrive or who typically arrives. So we can sort of be a partner and an advocate in this process, certainly a support. Okay. So a little bit more about that traditional model, I'll, I'll just mention a couple of things. I'm not going to go through this full slide again for the sake of time. So the federal government contracts with any of typically nine or 10 big national agencies and they have local offices across the states and across the country. So nearest to you in the Wisconsin side of the state line border would be now World Relief of Chippewa Valley. And I'll sort of mention them a little bit more in detail coming up here. So these are those nine to 10 different national agencies that work across the country. Again, I won't go into too much detail here, but I will point out that these are the local affiliates across various Wisconsin communities. And so it is that World Relief and more broadly known as World Relief Wisconsin that would be closest to your area within the Wisconsin state borders. It is important to note the state border piece because the federal government does not allow a refugee resettlement agency or a state providing social services to cross state lines. So if a resettlement agency exists in Minneapolis or in St. Paul, they can only resettle within Minnesota's borders. And the state of Minnesota can only support programs for refugees that are delivered and for refugees that reside within Minnesota's borders. Same thing applies to us here now with World Relief of Chippewa Valley able to provide resettlement in that area if uh, the resolution passes and things proceed. So a couple more notes for you, just a bit of the changing landscape of resettlement across our state. Uh, the counties colored in green have had resettlement uh, programs for many years and decades in many cases. The couple of the pair of counties colored in that teal bluish color established new or sort of renewed programs in 2021. And then of course, now the yellow counties would be the most recent counties to establish resettlement offices. Something that may be of interest to you, you can see St. Croix County isn't colored in here. That's because the office wouldn't of course be located in St. Croix County, but rather any refugee resettlement agency operating newer settlement can do so within a 100 mile radius of their office. So uh, St. Croix County is, all of St. Croix County, I should say, is within 100 mile radius of the location of the office in Eau Claire. So that means that it's eligible for resettlement, does not mean that it happens. I want to pause there to touch on that a little bit more because I think this is something worth noting that isn't actually in our slides typically, but might be of interest for you. So I think as you might be aware, World Relief of Chippewa Valley has been approved to resettle up to 75 people in the current federal fiscal year. That means between now and September 30th or the end of September. Uh, that number is focused on Eau Claire proper and then a small halo in a radius around the city of Eau Claire. The resettlement of individuals outside of that immediate service area is almost always, and I, and I mean this very literally, it's almost always only ever restricted to an individual that has a family tie. So if their relative already lives within St. Croix, St. Croix County, excuse me, and that relative applies to say, I would like my mother or my father or my son or my daughter, whoever that might be, to resettle. They have been approved with refugee status. They are protected. They're admitted to come into the country. I'd like them to live near me and reunite my family. That's how that process would almost always work. As a former employee at a resettlement, uh, resettlement agency myself, it's an incredibly difficult job and to add a 66 mile commute between Eau Claire and Hudson would just simply be prohibitive to ever providing resettlement in that area in a logical and practical sense, without that family member already present to provide the direct immediate support as needed. And so while I don't commit to things and I don't give my word on things that I can't control, just a policy of mine, um, I would be highly, highly, highly confident that the only cases and examples that are relevant for St. Croix County would be family reunification cases. So these are a much smaller number of cases. It's of that 75, I cannot give you a percentage, but it's very rarely a majority of an agency's cases are family reunification. It's typically a much smaller process. Again, I, I can't give you a number. I wish that I could, but that's just not something that we control. So let me get to a few more slides here and then I want to take a break for questions. I'm going to skip over a little bit of the detail of the Welcome Corps because I don't think that's as relevant in this case. Happy to provide more information. These slides can be made available after and it is something that can be easily found in a Google search or something similar. But that again is that alternative pathway that could exist regardless of whether or not our resettlement agency exists. Okay, so I'm going to skip over some of this data and go to just a couple of points for you. So this is our state's arrival totals for the previous federal fiscal year. So this gives you a sense of scope or scale. So if World Relief of Chippewa Valley is capped at 75 for this year, or what are, what do other areas look like? So other similarly sized areas are typically averaging in that 150, 130, maybe up to 175 number. Now, these numbers can ebb and flow, but you can see the numbers for Dane County and Marathon County. Sheboygan County hasn't yet been approved, but they would start at 75 around this list. So you can see where Brown County and then the Fox Valley more generally are. So I would say anywhere between that 75 and longer term purview. If you were to ask if one question were to be, well, 75 this year, what about next year? I say that because that was a question that came up in Eau Claire. We can't promise what that number is again, it's not within our control. But just seeing the data of what other counties have already done, those counties that have been resettling for some time, this gives you some sense of scale. Again, this is individual people, not families. So of course, if it's a family of four, this might be two parents and two children. Okay, um, I'm going to skip over some of the detail on Operation Allies Welcome. That was the Afghan resettlement. And I'll skip over some of the detail on the invasion of Ukraine and how that then of course impacted resettlement. Because I want to get to this last, most important section, resources and support. So one thing that's incredibly important to know is that my job, my, personally, my job, not just the state's job, not just my team's job, but specifically me as the overseer of day-to-day operations is to ensure that we are funding programs wherever refugees are in large enough numbers to find them essentially, to ensure that they have support for their first five years after arrival. So I mentioned earlier that resettlement agencies are responsible to deliver certain services within usually 30 to 90 days. They also then make referrals to other programs that we fund. And in most cases, we fund those refugee resettlement agencies themselves. So that referral is very seamless. That person is well cared for and it's an internal handoff from federally funded programs to state funded programs. Now, it is a little bit of a misnomer because I should let you know that we are actually federally funded from the Office of Refugee Resettlement. We get that, that funding and then we award it out to local resettlement agencies, community organizations, nonprofits, school districts, clinics, a whole bevy of different types of social service providers. And I'll kind of give you some scope of what that looks like. I just essentially went over that slide. So um, one thing I do want to make you aware of, and, and this is consistent with what I was saying earlier, but I think it helps to expand the scope. So what we do here for our team primarily revolves around refugees. That again, legal definition of folks who fit that protected status had that uh, status designated to them by an organization empowered to do so, it's the United Nations and then two other private organizations international that can do that. So most of the people that are eligible for our programs are refugees to that definition. Similar groups though that may be eligible, but typically much smaller numbers could be on the screen here. Asylees, I want to touch on that. These are people who have been granted asylum. And in that case, the only difference between a refugee and an asylee is that the refugee went through that application process before entering the country. The asylee entered the country or approached the country to attempt entry first, then applied for the process and there may be some time passed before they're, before they're granted that asylum. People are not eligible for our programs and people are not relevant to this conversation until they are granted to that protected process. Asylees aren't resettled through resettlement agencies. They are, they resettle themselves essentially through private means. So the populations on this slide, really the only ones that are relevant if you're concerned about newer settlement established in your area, something that you would have some degree of input to or that you could make a statement regarding, it's really regarding refugees, that top bullet point. And then Iraqi and Afghan special immigrant visa recipients, those, the populations here that are resettled through resettlement agencies. It's possible that other special targeted groups could come through like we saw with Afghan humanitarian parolees and Ukrainian humanitarian parolees, but those programs are winding down and could be replaced by refugee programs. Something else to note is that there are other groups that are very similar, but don't actually have eligibility for refugee status just due to the idiosyncrasies of the federal government and the processes they use. So Venezuelans, Nicaraguans and other similar groups that have humanitarian parole may not actually be eligible for these programs and wouldn't again be relevant to that resettlement conversation. So what do we do? Whole lot of programs, uh, and it's expanded very much in recent years. So without listing all these for you, I'll kind of break it down in that the first two bullet points relate to benefits assistance. So for a limited time, for up to the first 12 months, people who economically qualify could receive cash assistance or medical assistance only equal to what a United States citizen would receive with the same economic criteria and only if this refugee does not qualify for that same assistance. So in other words, they don't get any more assistance than any US-born citizen might get and they don't get any duplicated, doubled up assistance due to refugee protected status. It's just there to give them uh, equal opportunity to what a citizen might receive for a more limited time, only for the first 12 months. Whereas in the state of Wisconsin, our W2 Wisconsin Works Cash Assistance Program is a 48 month eligibility, so considerably longer. Other than cash assistance, everything else we do is service-based. Everything else is, how do we put case managers in position or direct supports or educators in position to directly help a person? And so that might be related to employment or to obtaining English as a second language. Might be in sort of more general holistic, other social services. Could be regarding uh, school attainment, of course, high school graduation or college entry, college graduation. We've got programs specific to mentorship or programs specific to older refugees. We have programs that help identify and then provide support regarding specific health concerns more holistically. This could Regarding specific health concerns more holistically, this could be anything from. Dental care to diabetes, to mental health, to anything else that. Any person may actually provide or excuse me, request some additional support for. These programs can provide some training and some resources and some referrals. So make sure that people are well cared for. We also do a bit more direct support within that medical screening process. So in addition to all the overseas checks that I mentioned earlier. Once people do arrive, they are required to retest and re-screen. For various communicable diseases through the refugee medical screening program that we also help to fund and coordinate across our state. Just to ensure they didn't somehow catch the flu on the plane ride over or something similar to that. We have other various employment programs and then a whole slew of different programs related to Afghan or Ukrainian specific individuals. For just those real targeted issues that our countries identified in the last two years here. So overall, what we try to do and what we would do in the Eau Claire general area. And I can't say specifically where that is yet because I don't have that information yet. Would be try to provide programs that help people to achieve self sufficiency, improve their wellbeing, obtain employment. And really maintain community connectedness. So I can end here. I'll skip some of these with my contact info. This is actually for my team and you are absolutely welcome to reach out to us at any time, but I think if there's still time for questions. I would stop to take questions and I don't know what the easiest method of that is. So I would defer back to the board on how you would want to organize questions.
Do you have any other questions? I'm sorry, from the board. Any board members have questions? Supervisor Otino.
Yeah, based on your definitions at the beginning, legally admitted. And vetting. Well, no vetting was performed and none of these people have been legally admitted. So how can they qualify for any of these programs in the first place? And then you mentioned health screening afterwards. There, there was no, no health screening whatsoever when you just walked across the border. I believe that they do not fit the qualifications that you just stated from your program. Can you answer that for me? Thank you.
Well, it's hard to answer if I don't know who the individuals are, but what I can tell you that what you said was 100% correct. If people walked across the border and they weren't legally admitted. Or they weren't screened in all these different ways I mentioned, that's not a refugee and that's not relevant to this conversation today. That's the wrong fight. That's a different topic. If concerns are along those lines, then you really need to investigate other areas of concern that you can respond to. Because refugees fit only that legal definition and I'm not trying to. Point toward anyone else as a problem or not a problem, but rather just to help support to say if that's an area of concern, then this is the wrong area of attention.
Other questions? Supervisor Reimer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What happens after the first five years of financial support is, is complete?
Sorry, I thought there was more to that. I couldn't drink that water yet. It's difficult to say because it can be of course, unique for every person. And I will clarify that financial support is only available for the first 12 months after someone arrives. Beyond that, those next, well, the whole five years, including the first 12 months and the next four years after. That's where we can provide services. So that's where case managers may make referrals. We do have certain limited things that we can also help support for unlimited time and that would be information. Or referral. So if a person who's been here for 15 years says, I need help with X. If they can come ask any of our funded partners, that partner is allowed to and is funded to refer. That participant or that person to whatever service might be necessary. They just can't provide it themselves using our funding. Unless it is a interpretation or translation service. So if someone still has a language challenge that needs to be addressed, that. Can also be provided or be addressed with our funding beyond five years. The last thing I might mention is that citizenship, so becoming a naturalized US citizen. That can't actually happen until you're here in the US for five years. So that's the last thing that we can also support. Which happens very commonly is that after folks are here for five years, they can apply for US citizenship, go through the testing process. And that vetting process and then obtain their citizenship. We can support that too after five years.
Supervisor Carlson?
Thank you. When do the local communities get to have a say if they want, um. People to come in refugees? The 1980 Refugee Act says that local officials are supposed to be informed and, um. That hasn't happened. Nobody, we're within a hundred miles and none of us were ever informed. Um. It seems like it was only found out after a news report journalist found it on an agenda and asked about it. We had unelected officials in Eau Claire. Contacting World Relief and said, yes, we'll take them in and they started the whole process. So where and when do the people get a say and the elected officials get a say or through their elected officials? On if they even want them in the area, if they could afford to have them in the area. Cause we need to consider our resources and see if this is something that we can support without damaging our citizens' support from the government.
Those are excellent questions. I wish I was the right person to answer those for you, unfortunately. As a state entity, we don't oversee that resettlement initial process. So the, the best agencies to speak to on that would be. The World Relief Organization themselves, of course, who we do contract for other social services provision. As well as the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. Their Office of Refugee Resettlement and as well as the Department of State's Bureau of Populations, Refugees and Migrants. That, both of those federal bureaus did actually just recently visit Eau Claire, the city and county to answer exactly those types of questions. So I'd be happy to, as much as my team has contact information for those groups to direct you to exactly what did or didn't happen there. I can't speak to what did or didn't happen in St. Craig County. It's just out of my scope and my purview.
Supervisor Adams?
Sir, I'm Supervisor Adams. Who decides how many? Are going to be assigned to a certain geographical area. Once an organization has decided that they're going to start operations.
I'm sorry, sir. I don't know. I understood the question there. Would you mind clarifying that?
So you gave a number of 75 for this fiscal year, I believe, for the Eau Claire area?
Correct.
Who decides that number?
Oh, excellent. So that number is decided upon between. Recommend a request process typically from the federal partner. So. I breezed through it quickly, but there are, let me just back up a second here. There are nine to 10 organizations. I hedged that number because it's changed a few times over the last four years. So these organizations. Typically make a request or a recommendation to the local office. Which would be the folks on this slide. These are the agencies in Wisconsin. That team then does have to consult with our state office. So this is where I was. Saying earlier that we have considerable influence, but not control. So we can say. If we believe that a certain community does or does not have resources to support a number. That we would then deliver that feedback to that national organization back on this slide. So every year, each of these local organizations are required to consult with my team and it's actually my supervisor and I'm very remiss to. Go through this much conversation and not mention my own supervisor. Who is our state refugee coordinator. It's a federally recognized position. It's a position that the federal government requests each state have in order to deliver refugee social programs. So she has to be consulted with each year in order for each of these local agencies to resettle. Any given number, whether that's one or a hundred or anything more than that. So again, we don't control, but we have influence. So we get to hear.
Questions, other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. York. So a follow up question on the last two really. So just to clarify, so the federal government is determining who comes into the country. They're declaring the refugee status. They're doing the vetting. And then they're allocated to a state at that point or a certain number is allocated to a state?
That's correct. It's what can happen and this changes a little bit depending on administrative process. Is that the federal government typically sets a cap per region. So let's say, for example. If the national cap is 125,000, maybe we would say that. 25,000 of those individuals can come from Southeast Asia and 20,000 might come from Sub-Saharan Africa. And then that number can help to sort of whittle down. Which individual people are then assigned to different national agencies in this slide. So what sometimes happens is that a national partner who is assigned a certain number of cases. May look at their network and let's say, just some anecdotal evidence for you. So. It happens to be that just over the course of the last 10 or so years, Milwaukee, where I now live. Is one of the, if not the largest site for Rohingya Burmese refugee resettlement, a specific ethnic group of people from Burma. Anywhere in the world outside of either Burma or typically Malaysia where they might flee to. So because Milwaukee has a large population already. It could be that any agency who has offices in Milwaukee. Would welcome, hey, we're happy to take more Burmese Rohingya because we've got a network there. There's already people in that community that. Speak the same language, share the same cultural traditions and can provide support. And that's really the, the ultimate goal is to make sure that people aren't isolated because having folks who can support usually means that there is better support. Forgive me if I didn't fully answer that question.
Yeah, I think you definitely got the first part on it. And so the question then is where they're resettled in Wisconsin. It's really based upon these resettlement agencies. That are requesting it. So World Relief of Eau Claire, they requested 75 refugees. That's coordinated with your office. But you're not predetermining where they're going. You're going off of their request?
That's exactly correct.
And then their placement is really up to that agency, whether it's going to be within the city of Eau Claire or, you know, some other area. The agency is making that determination of where it's placed?
That's also correct. Now, I would just add that the. There are essentially, I'll oversimplify to two types of cases, we'll call it. One I mentioned earlier is a family reunification case and that's where I described that. The World Relief Agency operating out of Eau Claire would very likely only place people with family ties. Personal direct family living in St. Craig County. Only those family type cases would get placed in St. Craig County. Now, it's up to that local agency in Eau Claire to say. Well, and please forgive me. While I taught social studies, it was more so history and political science and economics, less so geography. I can't name a suburb of Eau Claire right now. But if there were a suburb of Eau Claire that might be five miles, 10 miles from Eau Claire, an easy drive so that a case manager. Can still get to that family very conveniently within, you know, a few minutes. That might be something where the agency would decide, well, because of available housing or employment or. The school district can provide supportive services, et cetera. That the local agency may say, well, I'd like to place a family in this address instead of that address, but. Be just because of the practical nature of the job of the day to day nine to five of these people doing this work. It almost always stays within a very tight halo of that office, just because people don't. Want to spend their time in the car driving. They want to spend their time helping other people.
And then, so. The, the agents is, is going to be working on that placement. Can you confirm for us whether they do have within the, the Wisconsin process? A legal requirement for notification? I mean, I know you couldn't speak specifically to whether they had done that or not, but is there in the process supposed to be a notification?
I would, I'll answer both because I'm not sure exactly which one you might mean. So they are required. I can't say it's legal per se. I don't know that this was written into state law and. I have to be clear on the difference between law and policy or regulation, et cetera. But it is a requirement of the resettlement program that that local agency consult with us, with our team, with my supervisor. Now, if your question was regarding, is that group required to consult with the local community where they may place someone? That answer is also yes, but there are different degrees of consultation. Now, I will be very transparent with you to say that typically consultation does not mean written stated approval. There was an executive order passed or issued, I should say, in, I believe, 2019. That required local written approval prior to resettlement. And that executive order was actually struck down by the courts and is not in effect. Now, the state of Wisconsin also has a, a similar. Statute on the table that's under consideration and forgive me, I am not an elected official. So I'm not a member of our state's legislature. I'm a civil servant. Nine to five, well, hopefully usually nine to five, you know, as often as I'd like. So I can't speak to the status of that, but I can say that it is something that you can look up to see where that is in the approval process. I do know that it's moved forward. But I know that it's not yet approached the governor's office and so that the governor has not yet had a chance to review it and sign it or veto or do anything else.
And my last question, Mr. York. So. Is there anything within the current policies then where a community can go on record as indicating that they are not interested in participating? In the refugee resettlement?
There's not a specific. Venue for it. There's not a specific pathway of doing so, but. That is one of the reasons why a state refugee coordinator and the team under her, so then me and my team exist. It's so that when concerns are in any way. Communicated, whether that's through a formal written designation or through a meeting like this or a phone call or an email or whatever it might be, we need to be aware of these. And that is exactly how actually that certain new sites have been selected because of. Certain degree of communicated support of newer settlement happening. And so that's something that we are always very aware of is. Many communities do reach out and ask, can we receive more refugees? Because I didn't get a chance. All right. I, I shouldn't actually divert responsibility. I didn't take the opportunity earlier to. An earlier gentleman that mentioned something about the economic impact. We're very excited and please, I understand that you may or may not take this horse, but I'm happy to send out. Our federal funder put out a 15 year, so a longer term study on the overall economic impact of refugees. The benefits that they add from their tax base, their home purchases, their business startups and their investments compared to. The tax loss of the programs that support refugees and the, the. Overwhelming evidence is that there's a considerable net gain to this. And so many communities are reaching out noticing that. Many communities are noticing that their workforce. Maybe aging or maybe shrinking due to varieties of factors and that there might be a pending concern regarding the availability of workers and refugees. Probably won't arrive in large enough numbers to fix those issues. If we're talking 75 people around Eau Claire, St. Craig County. Half of them on average are likely to be children. So now we're down to, let's call it 37 people. Well, not every person in that family may work. Sometimes one person may work and one person may stay at home to raise kids or. In some cases, they may actually not stay where they're first located. You know, refugees are not. Tied to their original location. Folks may originally arrive to Minneapolis and choose to move into Hudson or into St. Craig County or anywhere else and vice versa. It could also happen. So there's a lot of possible movement that can happen in this scenario.
So Carlson?
Could Wisconsin, because before I asked about the local community, but can Wisconsin opt out of taking refugees if they don't want to? I noted that, I note that Wyoming doesn't accept refugees. So, um. As a kind of as a side question, um. How did Wisconsin get into the refugee business in the first place? What was that process?
That's a great question. I, I wish genuinely, I wish I could answer that for you. I've worked with the state for seven years now and. That's again, that's probably my fault for not asking that question. I know that we've been doing it roughly since around 1980. How we started, I couldn't tell you. I can tell you that. It's always somewhere above 42 or 43 states out of the country have state refugee coordinator positions and then typically more states than that. Have a refugee resettlement program. Now, in some cases, the state government may not oversee refugee resettlement. But resettlement still happens through private oversight of resettlement. And so these are called replacement designees. So I'd strongly encourage you to look that up. So even if the state of Wisconsin were to not lead this process. It's possible that a replacement designee could be formed or could be selected or could apply. To basically fill in. So this happens in other states across the country. I believe Missouri is, is one that's relatively close to us. That's a replacement designee site. I want to say maybe Kentucky is a replacement designee site. Forgive me if I'm wrong on those. This is off the top of my head. I didn't research that for you before coming here. But these are excellent questions.
Other questions?
I'm going to turn on some lights too. It's getting dark in here.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Okay, other questions from the board? Supervisor Lind.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming to do this education, we really appreciate it. My understanding of World Relief being brought in, they were set up through private, through, especially three people that started the ball rolling in Eau Claire, and there was no, no one alerted until October when they stumbled on it. Is there a way to back this off and do it legally? Because this is a violation of this Refugee Act that we have from 1980, when it talks about elected officials, when private or just employees do this, it seems, it seems a violation and that this is not being set up correctly.
These are excellent points. Regards to the violation, this is where I just want to be very humble in that, I don't want to speak out of turn here. I can tell you that the director, or an associate director of the federal program that funds our team, Office of Refugee Resettlement, as well as directors in the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services and in the Bureau of Populations and Refugees and Migrants, these are the three big federal organizations that oversee resettlement. I was in the room with them at Eau Claire at the hearing where those agencies, along with World Relief, walked through the consultation process that World Relief did administer, and they certified that this was a process that was done correctly. Was it done perfectly? Could it have been done better? They said it certainly could have been done better, but it was done correctly according to requirements. I will say, though, that I'm totally remiss to even mention that to you, because again, as a civil servant of the state of Wisconsin, this is, that's outside of our area of responsibility here. So is it, I think your other question is, is there an opportunity to still stop or pause this? I, in both cases, whether or not this was done correctly and can it be stopped or paused, I don't mean to defer you to somebody else as if to pass the buck, but rather just to help try to set expectations of what are we good at, what can we control, what can we help with, and then what do other areas help with? And that really is a question that should be brought to the World Relief National Office or to that Bureau of Populations, Refugees and Migrants, is really the other federal department. They're more involved than the Office of Refugee Resettlement is, or are, is more involved on the social services side. So if it's about that selection process, that site process, that's really a PRM process, Bureau of Populations, Refugees, Migrants, PRM. And I would highly recommend that you reach out to contacts with those groups. I can see if I can get that contact name to you. I don't know if I can or not, that would be my boss's rolodex and allowance of, does she have contacts that we can refer to? But I'm certainly happy to reach out and to ask that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Supervisor Anne Summerlin.
Yes, you mentioned that during the first year, of course, there is support from the government, from the federal government, but how much support, and is that just in a wage? How about support for the scenario you said where there'd be, maybe a husband and a wife and two children, the children now go to school, but they don't understand a single word of English, so there has to be a translator hired? How about, how about infrastructure, things like that? Is there support for that, or is that strictly up to the, to the county or to the community that they're in?
That, sir, is my job. That is my personal job on my team. So it's my job, as I mentioned a little earlier, to oversee day-to-day operations of what we do. So we receive funding from the federal government to make sure that that support is there, that infrastructure, I appreciate that word you used, is present. I've been in my current role in management for just three years now, still a babe in the woods in that, in that respect. Prior to this, I worked on the team for about four years overseeing a variety of our grants. I was involved in that cash assistance grant, and then also in our social services grants and our school impact grant. As a former teacher myself, that's kind of the, that's where my heart is, very much so. And so we fund school districts and private educational institutions, after-school programs, community-based organizations that provide after-school or summer school, literacy organizations that do the same thing. We provide funding to all those organizations for what you mentioned specifically, in-class supports such as translators, or sometimes it's translated little electronic devices, if that's appropriate, or it's separate programs in some cases even that school districts can apply for, to say, we want to create a newcomer center, for example, so that when students are within their first X number of days, it's different for any school district, that the district can apply to create that newcomer center. Our funding model is essentially to offer the list of available allowable services from the federal grants we receive, and then to let the local communities tell us how they want to use it. So basically what we do is we say, here's how much money we can make available in your area, and usually I decide that with my team according to how many people either have already resettled to an area or will resettle to an area. And then we put out grants to say, what do you need to do in the area of youth education, or in adult employment, or in whole-family health, or in services to older refugees for community integration, or access to needed services, or eventually citizenship applications? So that's, that's what we do here, is to try to figure out where that need is, and certainly listen to local constituents and local organizations. If they say they need services, that's what we want to know.
Okay, just to follow up on that before I let you go, for how long a period of time do you do that?
But I'm not sure I understand completely. The programs that we offer are eligibility for the person is five years. Most of our contracts, if that's maybe more applicable for you, they can range per program. In most cases, I can say currently, right now, most of our contracts are one-year contracts with at least two renewals built in, so a three-year period. In some cases, our contracts are two-year contracts with three renewals built in, so up to a six-year period. We have to have limitations on there, just as a state government entity, to not fund one agency into perpetuity, because of course that could be unfair for competition and for, you know, equity and all that. So we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to cycle those things. But where we put the funding is something we review every year, and once we determine that there's a population that needs those services, that's where we enter that contract for anywhere between a one, two, three, or six-year cycle right now.
Supervisor Carlson.
Yeah, I must admit, I'm confused. I was in Eau Claire when the World Health gave their form. They were not very forthcoming in a way that they took all our questions through an app and then picked which ones they wanted to answer, and we weren't allowed to say anything during the whole meeting. But they told us that after 90 days, it would be on the local community to take over, and that their main job, it seemed, was to teach them how to get welfares-type systems, Section 8, food stamps, and all that. And after 90 days, they were on their own. They did say that they tried to get them one year's rent already prepaid before that 90 days is up, so at least they didn't have to worry about rent for a month. You're talking about grants to the community and this and that. They said nothing about that, and this is the first I ever heard of these grants. So I'm curious, who applies for these grants? Is it the community? Is it World Relief? How do these grants work?
Well, I want to answer your question, but I also want to align with what you said earlier. I appreciate you letting me know that, because it is public information that you can look up, that we do fund World Relief, including both the Eau Claire area and the Fox Valley area, to provide many of these social programs that I'm speaking to right now. So I wasn't in that meeting. The meeting that I was in was with the federal partners after that meeting took place. The federal partners came because that meeting took place, and as you're telling me here and as I heard prior, wasn't maybe conducted well enough. So they do have programs. I am here to tell you that they absolutely, I can blissfully show you the programs that they have, and I will give you my absolute promise, this is my professional and personal word, that they will be informed that this comment was made to me, and that we will ensure that they are aware of those programs and that we'll address that messaging, because they have an obligation to provide services through our funding. Anytime a person approaches that organization and asks for it, World Relief has an obligation to continue to provide some sort of service for that five-year duration of eligibility. Now, that service might be a referral. We can't guarantee that World Relief or any organization can do everything for everyone as they want it. Sometimes an agency will have to say, we'd love to help, but we can't do that. What we can do is refer you to this agency, or we can do this other thing for you. Sometimes that has to happen. In fact, quite often it has to happen because, as a government agency, we give them a specific list of, you can buy this hammer but not that hammer, sort of thing. Not literally, but you get the idea. Forgive me, did I answer your question full, or was there a second part to it?
No, thank you for giving your answer.
Okay.
Okay, any other further questions, Supervisor Fiedler?
Mr. York, thank you for explaining the state and federal roles, but in your best judgment, what impact would a pause resolution have on the refugee resettlement process?
That is an excellent question. And I want to be humble to you, my best judgment might not mean much. So I can tell you what I think, but I don't think that should necessarily be a part of your decision-making process, because, while I do think I'm pretty well expert in the area of resettlement now, I don't want to be cocky about it, but I think I know what I'm talking about here. I'm not a federal entity, and so I can't tell you what their impact might be. I can tell you that it's, like I mentioned earlier, there isn't an existing pipeline to say, this is how you sign off right now. It was a consultation process that was required by the federal government, and please, in due respect to the others who have commented that that wasn't followed, I don't mean to disagree with you, I just mean to say that the federal partners told us that, to their minimum requirements, it was followed. So if a resolution were to be passed by any individual county, it may be something that the federal government can take into consideration, or that World Relief themselves can take into consideration. To answer your question, in all sincerity and all honesty, I don't expect that that would cause a pause right now, but that's not really mine to say. So I just don't think that's a good decision point for St. Craig County at this time.
Any other questions? Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. York, Supervisor Adams. So if the World Relief Foundation opened up an office somewhere in St. Craig County, would that be a de facto landing point for incoming people?
If they did, I don't know if I can say de facto per se. So in order for that new office to be opened, there is that long approval process that has to happen, which does include consultation with our team. And so we do have to provide input to say, we think this is a good site or not. And I will tell you that in every instance I've ever been familiar with, the federal government does take our input if we say, St. Craig County is a great place, or St. Craig County is not the best place right now for these reasons. So it gives us the input but not the control. Now, if that were to all happen, and that consultation process were to happen, as it should, then technically speaking, yes, new refugees could be assigned to that office. But I can tell you that it typically takes months, if not years, for a new office to locate, to open, and that doesn't happen, again, all due respect to those who have different opinions here, but in a government sense, it doesn't happen behind closed doors. There's approval processes and forms that need to be filled out, and approvals that need to be given before that can happen. So there's at least multiple steps in that process. Not to say that people in this room weren't, felt like they were kept behind a closed door, but from our perspective, the processes are followed, or would need to be, I should say.
Okay, that's, that's a good answer, but it sounds like what you just ended with, that it would be behind closed doors as far as our county or city.
I'm glad you asked that. I can't speak to the consultation process in too much detail, because that's that federal process. I can tell you that it's my understanding that a consultation does need to happen with local officials, with that local community that would be involved in receiving and supporting resettlement, whether that's through private volunteers or workers at the local county office that might distribute benefits, or et cetera. So that consultation process would still be required, so in that regard, it wouldn't be behind closed doors. Now, I can also tell you that this has been a gift to our team and to World Relief, maybe it's not the gift that they want, but it is a gift in that it should be immeasurably instructive on how to do this better, on the difference between meeting a requirement and meeting the purpose. And it might be the case, and again, please forgive me, because this is not my area of authority, maybe they met the requirement but not the purpose. And so that is an absolute learning opportunity. And I've been in the room with the officials from the World Relief National Office when they gave a very sincere apology to members of the board and other local entities around Eau Claire, to say, we thought we did the right thing, but we didn't. And so I, I can't speak to that person's heart or to their next moves, per se, but I would believe them, and I would take them at their word, that if something were to happen, their actions and their degree of consultation, they've learned now how to do it better, that there's a difference between what's required and what the actual purpose is.
Okay, any other final questions? Any final questions? Supervisor Rotino, then we'll wrap it up.
Yes, thanks. You did a wonderful job explaining the definition of the refugee. My concern here is those people, if they're legally allowed to come into the country and relocate, that's fine, but what are we going to do with the millions and the millions and the millions who don't fit this refugee status that are still coming into our country? You just described it earlier, like I said, legally admitted, which they weren't, no health screening, and no vetting was performed. We don't know where they came from, their background, their criminal background or anything. My concern is, what is the numbers we're looking at here that you're saying are refugees? And the definition of what would be an illegal alien? Can you provide us with that? Thank you.
That's a great question. Unfortunately, I can't provide numbers on it. Actually, let me just see quick, if I do have slides on national numbers of refugees, I skipped over some of that, but it wouldn't include populations that came through other pathways, or, speaking even outside of the folks who cross our border without that documentation or enter and are undocumented. There's also, of course, folks who enter through student visas and work visas and all sorts of other immigration programs. We wouldn't have data on that, because that's just not the hat that we wear. We focus in on just those folks who are already legally admitted and who have that eligibility for our programs. Excuse me for bopping around here. Here we go, this is what I wanted to show. So these are the national refugee arrivals. The blue line is the ceiling, so that's where I referred to, that the federal government can say, this is the number of refugees we're willing to take. The orange line is the number of people who actually arrived on a federal, a national scale. And so I would imagine, and again, forgive me, I can only try to remember so much and being an expert in so much, so I focus in on the refugee numbers. I can't tell you how this compares to other immigrant, legal or not, groups, but I imagine it's significantly smaller. I mean, a drop in the bucket compared to the numbers of folks who may arrive through other means. And this, to the same comment I made earlier, World Relief's office would have no involvement, it wouldn't be responsible for or related to that increase in immigration from any other means other than refugee resettlement. They are strictly, strictly only able to provide resettlement to those people who are legally authorized. In fact, they only get the referral from the federal government after the federal government has legally authorized a specific person. So for, if I apply from Sweden to come into the U.S. as a refugee, I'm first applying through those different federal agencies, and that federal government has to approve me Ben York, and then they send the name Ben York to that National World Relief Office who sends it to the local office hypothetically in Eau Claire. So it's not as if World Relief could even pull in people from other areas, they only accept that referral from the federal government.
Thank you very much, Mr. York. We really appreciate your presentation. I certainly learned a lot, a lot of good information, and we may have additional questions, so I hope it's okay if we contact you for those additional questions.
I hope you do, genuinely. It's our job to hear this stuff. It's our job to know where the concerns are, to know where capacity is and where it isn't. It's our job to help. I wish I had more time to have more conversations like this. I hope it's helpful. Sorry if I talk too much, that is what I'm best at, but please do reach out if you need to. Email's probably the best way, but of course, however you prefer.
Great. Thank you very much, really appreciate.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, I'll stop sharing here.
All right, now, after that presentation, we are going to move on to public comment. We have We have some limitations. We have a lot of people that want to speak. You will be allowed two minutes. Please, I believe there's a little light on the podium that will let you know when your two minutes is up. Please be very specific and concise. Please not, try not to repeat as much as you can, others' comments. Also, there will be, please be respectful, there will be no applause, or yelling, or hollering, or whatever the case may be from the public, please. I have a lot of requests here. We also will only go an hour, so please be respectful of everyone else that wants to speak. We have a lot to discuss tonight, so I'm hoping that you will also take into consideration my earlier comments in the fact that we are developing a resolution. We will talk about that a little later tonight, and we will have the opportunity to vote on that within a week, so in very short order. So please keep that in mind in your comments. I'm going to very arbitrarily pull some of these comments out, and if you, well, first of all, I'm going to start with actually one gentleman who wants to speak on another issue other than the resettlement. So we're going to start out with that. And then I will also let the next person know who will be up, and I'm just going to arbitrarily pick some of these from the pile. So the next person after Stephen Mueller will be Paula Baghiam, I'm sorry about that last name, but Paula, you'll be next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to get out of the lane for just two minutes. My name is Steve Mueller, I'm a farmer, and I'm also the president of the St. Croix County Farm Bureau. Our Farm Bureau Board of Directors is very proactive, we're looking, and we wish to make connections with our state and local legislators, as well as provide services to our, to our Farm Bureau members. So our board is hosting a, we're calling it a Taste of Farm Bureau event. Our board members are actually cooking a meal ourselves as a member appreciation dinner, and along with that, we are inviting both local and state legislators that represent areas in St. Croix County to meet the farmers that grow our food, discuss agriculture in St. Croix County, maybe learn from each other where we can help your needs, you can help our needs. So I'm here to invite the St. Croix County Board, April 12th, 6:00 P.M., to the White Pine Berry Farm in River Falls. I'm going to leave a stack of invites on there. You will find Jenna Grulkey's number. We asked for RSVP just because I'm going to be cooking a side dish, and I'd like to know if I'm going to cook for 30 or 100. So you're welcome to come if you can, and please, RSVP if you can as well. So we're hoping to get a good crowd and just engage about agriculture with maybe people that aren't in our wheelhouse all the time. Get to know our members, and our members can get to know our representatives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Paula. And after Paula will be Linda Carlson.
Hello, I'm Paula Baghiam. I'm a resident up in Holton. I want to be clear, this is an opportunity for us to be a welcoming community to refugees. I volunteer with immigrants, I volunteer with refugees, and they are amazing people. I cannot, the stories that I have, it just is overwhelming. I personally work with someone every week to help her with citizenship. She works at Anderson Windows. She's a contributing person in our, the community, this is Stillwater, but it could be here. So I want to make it clear that this is an opportunity. We, depending, it doesn't matter what religion you believe in, most religions believe in welcoming people in need. So I want to make it clear that if there's any resolution about refugee resettlement, I would propose a resolution to support helping refugees in this community in Hudson. I moved here and I was welcomed here. I don't see why we can't welcome these people and help them. My mom presently is working with, giving housing to some Ukrainian people, and they are now on their way to their own housing. Because they have jobs, they're contributing people. So this is, you know, what we could look forward to. So my time's up, thank you.
Okay, Linda Carlson, and after Linda will be Cynthia Abraham.
Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak. I believe in being charitable, but only if we can afford it. Our country right now, and that would include the state of Wisconsin, is in distress. We have inflation, we have a border crisis, lack of military people, we have a divided America, we have a senile president, we have a fentanyl crisis, and an education crisis. Before we can take on other countries' problems, we need to fix our own. Also, I liked, I keep getting told, don't worry about it, the government's going to take care of them. Well, I would like to remind everybody that our tax dollars pays for those government We were not informed of this. World Relief held meetings behind closed doors. So how can we trust that the government has our country's best interests in mind? It's taxation without representation. We, the people, demand to be represented.
Thank you, Linda. Cynthia, and after that will be, I believe, Dan Stauffen, if I have that right? Cynthia?
Hi, I'm Cindy Abraham. I am from, at this point, Glenwood City. I moved to Wisconsin two years ago. I moved from Minneapolis, I lived in the 5th District, so I'm very familiar with Keith Ellison and Ilhan Omar, and the shenanigans that go on. But so that I, hopefully I can get this in. In 1786, Thomas Jefferson and John Adams went overseas to Great Britain and talked to the ambassador of Great Britain, why Muslims held so much hostility towards Americans, because this is in reference to the Barbary Coast and what was going on with our ships that were going over there. The ambassador stated, Islam was founded on the law of prophets that is written in their Quran, that all nations who would not acknowledge their authority were sinners, that it was their right and duty to make slaves of all they could take as prisoners, and that every Muslim who would be slain in battle was sure to go to paradise. Jefferson then proceeded to look into things, he read the Quran to understand things better. I have many Israeli friends, and I had one that Facebooked from Israel. Remember October 7th? October 7th is coming to a community near you one day. So when we're thinking about things, we need to think about what possibly could happen, not only to us, but to our community financially and holistically. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, did I get that name right? And then after that will be Rajani Vidran? I'm not sure that's going to be, I hope I'm close on that.
I'm Don Stauffer from Glenwood City, Wisconsin, and I ask the supervisors to please consider
the community, the St. Croix County, consider us when you make this decision whether you're going to accept this program or not, because we're the ones that are going to be eventually footing the bill. And we're already paying high taxes, and it's hard enough for us to survive. And I thank you, and I please hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh. And after that will be Matthew Rust.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. First of all, you all can see that I am not a white supremacist. I am not a racist. I am a legal immigrant, immigrated from India to this country. I waited for a year-long process to be a green card holder in this country. I waited for a four-year-long process to be the United States citizen. I waited nine-year-long to be the United States Senate candidate in the Republican Party. So I have one thing to tell you. If you let this refugee resettlement happen in your community, your children and your grandchildren will move out of this community, not because they are racist, but because this community wouldn't be safe for them or their families anymore. Remember, I heard that person talking, I was traveling from Stevens Point, three hours I traveled to come here. When I was listening to that person, he did not have any good answer for any of your questions. He is saying that, that person, that refugees are going to contribute to our economy. Let me tell you, if they have money to contribute to our economy, why are they being a refugee in our country? Are they going to bring the money? No, no. They are going to use the opportunities belong to your children, my children, our taxpayer dollars. We are in 35 trillion national debt, my brothers and sisters. We do not have money for this. Also, remember, ask yourself a question. Do you want Sharia law in your community?
And we have two minutes, please.
Thank you. Do you want female genital mutilation happening in your society? Do you want child marriage happening in your society? These people are coming here, we do not know where they are. They are not vetted. You are being lied to. This is the time, you stand up for your family. It is about time. Rise up your voice. Whoever stands against your family, fire them from their job. Thank you.
Also, please do not applaud, let's show some respect, please. After Matthew will be Rhonda Miller.
Thank you, everyone. I want to thank you all for serving on the board and giving us the opportunity here. I think we've heard from so many people now, and that's why most people are here today, is to reiterate the fact that these non-government organizations have been shown to not be following the federal law in regard to refugee resettlement. If they had been, they would be meeting with the public, and the public would, the governments and the public would understand the ramifications, and everything would be okay. The problem is, they haven't been, the people haven't been informed, and so I would ask that all of you, and thank you for addressing this issue quickly within the week, but when that comes up, I would just ask that everybody, as representatives, elected representatives of the people of St. Croix County, that you do what's in the best interest of the people of St. Croix County, and not do what's in the best interest of non-government organizations and people who are not from our country. So that would be my request and my ask, and I think everybody here, most people would agree with that, so thank you again, and look forward to a good resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Rhonda Miller, and after Rhonda will be Cecilia Cooper.
I want to thank you, board, for taking up the, this topic. It's definitely heated a topic, and I appreciate the gentlemen from the Bureau of Refugee Resettlement. My name is Rhonda Miller. I live in Poe County, but I do have land in St. Croix County. My daughter lives here, she's a single mom of three kids, so this is going to impact with other children coming into the school district. In Poe County, we're seeing issues. I live near Luck, Wisconsin, and we have had Mexicans come in. I don't know what program they're functioning under, whether they're refugees, whether they're immigrants, whatever they are, they brought TB into Luck. And so it's really concerning, the health issues in our community. Unfortunately, listening to the gentleman from the Bureau of Refugee Resettlement, I walk away with so many more questions than he was able to answer. He talks about the consultation process, you know, yeah, they'll come in, they'll consult. Well, what does that mean? Because what it sounded like in Eau Claire, and I'm sorry, I was outside of the meeting, not inside, but it sounded like you guys would be told what is going to happen, and you have no say, instead of having the dialogue and having input on what your citizens here in St. Croix County want or desire for their community. So other, another question I have, walking away from listening to him, is what are the percentages of refugees after that five-year making it in our country as far as not being on a welfare program? If they're, if they're struggling, what happens then? So for the next 15 years, are they, 20 years, 30 years, are they living on our welfare system? Has the studies been done? So I guess it comes down to, please put a pause on this, please do the studies, impact studies on the community, on what, what the long-term effects of bringing these people in. I am a Christian, I believe in helping people, but our neighbors, our loved ones, are also needing a lot of help in this economic climate, so please do those impact studies. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cecilia will be followed by, nice random pick, Michael Cooper.
I support a pause on the resettlement of refugees until a study to determine the impact of, to taxpayers, our schools, housing, social services, and medical services has been completed. For example, Utica, New York, shows a potential impact on our schools in an article written by Susan D. Harris, a rural native-born New Yorker. Utica has received a population, refugee population. The town population itself is about 64,000, with a school district that struggles with a student body that speaks 42 different languages. Now, I'd like to refer you to the USNewsWorld.com. They do a high school ranking of all high schools in the United States, and they do a report card. I pulled up the report card for Hudson, Wisconsin. Here is their report card. Mathematics proficiency, 45%. Reading proficiency, 49%. Science proficiency, 45%. Graduation rate, 96%. How will a population of non-English-speaking students affect the ability to teach our students already here? The needs of the people already here are just as important, and they, and you were elected by them to represent them. Please put a pause on any refugee resettlement in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Cooper will be followed by Catherine Johansson.
Good evening. Tonight, there is a conversation how World Relief is sidestepping law and forcing us into accepting a number of refugees that when the dust settles, we really don't know how many it will be and what the burden on the county will be. None of us here are against refugees. We are against the underhanded way that is being pushed upon us. One of my concerns is the statement that the refugees do not have to assimilate into our society. They will be cloistered in their communities. How is that a benefit to us? I have some thoughts from past leaders on refugees that to the open-minded will be offered as wisdom. George Washington said, "The policy or advantage of immigration taking place in the body," and by that he means the settling them in a body of the government, "may be much questioned for by so doing they retain the language, habits, and principles, good or bad, that they bring with them. Whereas by an intermixture with our people, they or their descendants get assimilated to our customs, measures, and laws. In a word, soon become one people." Teddy Roosevelt said, "In the first place, we should insist that if the immigrant who comes here in good faith becomes an American and assimilates himself to us, he shall be treated on an exact equality with everyone else. For it is an outrage to discriminate against any such man because of creed or birthplace or origin. But this is predicated upon the man's becoming in every fact an American and nothing but an American." Frederick Douglass said, "If we could reach a degree of civilization higher and grander than any yet attained, we should welcome to our ample continent, all the nations, kindreds, and tongues of people, and as fast as they learn our language and comprehend the duties of citizenship, they should incorporate them into the American politics."
And that's two minutes. Okay, Catherine, and will be followed by Josie Pillman.
Hi, I'm Kathy Johansson from Spring Valley, Wisconsin. And I really don't want to add anything else to this. I just want to make sure that I encourage you all to thoroughly investigate this resettlement process and the legality of it, and just make sure that you are thoroughly informed before you make any kind of a decision. And you guys have a lot to think about, so thank you.
Thank you. Josie will be followed by Dustin Marquand, if I got that right. There's Josie, I think.
Hello, thank you for having me speak. I, after listening to the gentleman share, I would like to say there's need for due process. Take a lot more time to study this. I'm also concerned that the large government, the federal government, the NGOs are foisting something on you without you having done any kind of research yourself or having a say. They're basically just telling you, this is what we're going to do. No choice. And we're going to pay it, big government. So I would just really encourage all of you on the board to put a pause, do some study. There's a lot of concerned citizens here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dustin will be followed by Alan Gaul.
Hello, thanks for taking my comments. I just live in Hammond with my family. Nervous, first time speaking at something like this. The speaker mentioned these refugees being well-supported wherever they come from. I just wanted to say how about supporting the people who are already here. Got lots of neighbors. My taxes went up 800 bucks this year. I have refugee relatives from Laos from the 80s. Not opposed to regular immigration or even possibly refugees. My uncle came, became part of this country and is a proud citizen. So firsthand experience with that, growing up with that. The hard part is, is I'd be a lot less skeptical of this program if we didn't have going on what we have at our border and how much we're already even seeing that in our community. Just the people coming in, very obviously, you know, signing up for programs, filling our schools, at least as far as the extra burden it takes on the schools, how hard it is, and it's reflected in taxes, et cetera, very rapidly. And there's no going back once it's implemented. And the gentleman, the speaker, also mentioned, in one of his responses, that when we were talking about the border and already the illegal immigration that's happening, he said, "That's not the forum." Well, this is the forum that's before us and something that at least we can speak to in the same category. Well, I won't share my other anecdote. Just thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. Alan will be followed by Steve Nielsen.
Good evening. Thanks for the time. I am here to also ask you to do a lot of research on this issue of refugee resettlement and have a pause resolution. I'm going to focus on vetting. From my research, I don't hear that there is much vetting, and so I don't think you're hearing the right thing there. There's a huge issue here because I'm going to talk about the Muslim Brotherhood. There are many, or at least some, let's just say some, people that come through this program that are very dangerous and follow this group. Most refugees are nonviolent, to my understanding, but the federal government is not vetting, excuse me, thousands of these people and giving them free passes. And I also understand that many of these people don't have birth certificates. How are you going to vet these people? Are you just, they told me that they're not going to do harm to others. Is that really a good vetting process? So just quickly, last board meeting, I did pass out the explanatory memorandum of the Muslim Brotherhood. I also passed out a letter written by 10 former senior executives of the FBI. I hope you'll take a look at it. It's just more evidence. But this explanatory memorandum is the manual for the Muslim Brotherhood, and their strategic goal in North America is a kind of grand jihad in eliminating and destroying the Western civilization from within and sabotaging its miserable house by their hands and the hands of the believers so that it is eliminated. That's strong language. Also, this former FBI executive document warned of an invasion already coming, it's already occurring, in the southern border and refugee resettlement program, especially from terror-linked countries. And this represents a never-seen-before threat to our nation, is what they said. And I've run out of time. All right, I guess I will say the federal government needs to prove that they are vetting these people to us, and please keep my family safe.
Thank you. Steve, and then that will be followed by Timothy Holden.
Good evening. I am a resident of Hudson Township, and I'm not going to waste my two minutes like Mr. Berg did. And I say that because if what he says is true, that he deals only with legal immigrants who are vetted before they come to this country, he's dealing with a miniscule amount of refugees. Not 1%, not a tenth of a percent. Virtually nobody is fully vetted before they come into this country. How can I say that? Well, we have thousands of refugees every day cross that border and saying, "I'm a refugee." They're coming from probably 50 or more different countries. You really want to be played for fools? You believe that the Border Patrol calls an ambassador somewhere and say, "Oh..." They come across without no IDs. We have no idea who they are. So do we call an ambassador from some country and say, "Oh, we got a guy here who says he's such and such, came from this country. Can you tell me about him?" And they come back and within three days, and they say, "Oh, yeah. Here's his employment history, here's his education, and yeah, it's true, we did persecute him, and he deserves this." Don't be played for fools, okay?
After Timothy will be Tom Irwin.
Good evening. Timothy Holden from New Richmond, St. Croix County. Thank you for letting me speak. I don't know if you noticed about what's going on with our neighbors next door here, but 26 counties in Minnesota, and you can look it up, 26 counties have signed up for Second Amendment sanctuary counties because they're so afraid of Walz's shitshow in Minneapolis and St. Paul. And the Somalis do not want to assimilate. I worked in Minneapolis for two years, and I worked with Somalis, and they want Sharia law. And I know you're hearing that time and time again, but it's true. They don't want to assimilate. And I had three kids fighting this war, and I'll be darned if I let our nation go down because of the stupid decisions of a few people. And I just thank you for letting me speak tonight, but please, we're facing a storm. And if Minnesota becomes a sanctuary state, have you been following it? Anybody following that? Have you? Anybody following that? Well, why do you think 26 counties have become Second Amendment sanctuary counties? Just for their health? And I thank the sheriffs that are backing them because that's our last line of defense in the United States. Our sheriffs that took a constitutional oath against tyranny, domestic and foreign. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tom, and that will be followed by Scott Miller.
Okay, I took a Wisconsin map and I went with a 100-mile radius around Eau Claire, and I came up with about 30 counties that are going to be impacted by this. And I talked to a Pierce County rep. They had no idea. It's kind of like when we came here on the 16th. Nobody knows anything about this. This is just being done in the dark of night. Since then, we found out about this other little pathway that they're bringing refugees in through the Darien Gap where the, in conjunction with the United Nations, they put them into refugee status, and our military planes are flying them in so they don't get counted as the illegals coming across the border. Border security is national security. These attacks that are stepping up with on our citizens and on the law enforcement are only, they're just getting started. If you're going to write a resolution, the problem with some of them we've seen already is they don't have any teeth in them. You have to have a, "We will not accept any or else." And if you're not willing to do that, it's like a bully when you're young and he keeps slapping you around, and you know, you ask him, "Please, don't beat me up anymore, huh?" You got to put some... What I think should be done is with all these counties surrounding Eau Claire, we ought to be like a class-action lawsuit, including Eau Claire, not just the refugee resettlement. So the question is, is are you going to punt on this, continue to kick it down the road, or are you going to stick up for the citizens in America? Because these people truly are not coming in to assimilate. We don't have to go over that anymore. Think about the families in Fargo who have the murdered cops this last summer, and there's a whole list from the Boston Marathon to 9/11. That's what they're bringing to us.
Okay, after Scott Miller will be Darla Myers.
All right, thanks for the time tonight. Appreciate you guys putting in a little extra overtime. Hope they're paying you well for it. Hey, I just want to point out, I'm going to give you a little video here. I hope you guys enjoyed all the open records requests. One in particular I want to point out is how Eau Claire got into the mess. The unelected official that, you know, signed him up, said, "Hey, yeah, we'd love to be woke and go broke." So this is, the guy that spoke references the leadership level at the World Relief, this is the head of policy right here. I want you to listen to him talk.
Again, it's an exploratory process. This was our staff out of the Appleton, Wisconsin area of, you know, what are other communities in Wisconsin that have the right mix of a welcoming community, of job opportunities, of relatively affordable housing, of faith communities that want to be a part of welcoming refugees because that's really central to our mission at World Relief? And, you know, we looked at a number of communities, but Eau Claire came to the top of the list as sort of hitting all those marks, and we began a process of, you know, consulting with local leaders, governmental leaders, as well as school boards, law enforcement, potential employers, apartment, you know, landlords.
So I'd just like to point out that it sounded like World Relief was seeking out Eau Claire, right? That's what he just said? Well, we know from the open records requests that it came from somebody unelected within Eau Claire. So the biggest problem I have with our government at all levels is we can't be honest and we can't do it out in the open, right? So this is supposed to be the guy that we're supposed to trust based on the guy that talked and gave us a presentation. So if that's the guy we got to trust as a guy, that was done, there was a NPR interview February 14th, excuse me, February 14th, okay? He just gave that. He should know that it was not done the way he's trying to lead it on. And there will be plenty of open records requests to find out how many schools found, you know, were notified about it. So I appreciate your time. I ask that you, you know, stand up for the citizens. You guys are in a horrible place, but you were built for such a time as this or you wouldn't be here. And you're going to stand up for us, the citizens, and we're going to fight for the rest of the country to take it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Darla, and who will be followed by Bonnie Christensen.
I just wanted to say that it's so important to define terms. So when someone says they felt they were bullied, I see someone exercising their constitutional right to redress their government through their elected officials. And I want to give you a little background about our little issue that we had in 2017 when Syrian refugees were almost illegally resettled here through the local Catholic Church, through the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops, and they were not within that 100-mile radius. If citizens hadn't stood up back then and said, "This is illegal," they would be here. And the gentleman who spoke is misinformed about how he went on about it would be practically impossible for those people to be here. They'd have to drive 66 miles. There is a UST, United States Thai, in Hudson, an aunt, in 2017, where those people would have been here through that person. And that is the information that he's not going to provide to you. And also, in 2017, there was a tuberculosis case here, not a resident, someone who was brought in from Metro Transit. $55,000-plus for that one TB case. And it didn't even show up on our records because they were not a resident. How many more could this county handle at that price? And Metro Transit is bringing in refugees. We have proof of it down in River Falls. I've got the pictures. So if you want any information on that, I have it. Couple of other things that I noticed about his presentation, there were no pictures showing single-aged men of military age. It was mothers and children. And along with all the diseases, there are other things of issue for that potential resettlement that we had. They shipped them off to Milwaukee because of our saying no. And they cited the reasons for no sufficient medical, no sufficient housing, and no sufficient transportation. Nothing has changed. Please support the pause. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bonnie, uh, after Bonnie will be Roxanne Jorstad.
I want you to see this. My name is Bonnie Christensen. I'm from Chippewa Falls. I have gone to the Eau Claire City Council, Eau Claire County Board, Chippewa County Board, and I've spoken here twice already, not to you guys. This is a leather cast made in 1936 that my mom wore for about six months. After she finished a full plaster body cast, she started, um, kindergarten on a board because she had tuberculosis. She had two, two vertebrae in her spine removed. And, uh, she lived. She was short, but she made it. But tuberculosis has not a vaccine and the course of antibiotics is six months to a year. It's very expensive and it doesn't always promote a cure. Somali women are one of the highest carriers in the world because they were a shador. They don't get sunshine. So what's the solution for tuberculosis? Laying in the sun. Because not only my mom had this in the 30s, but her father did. So he spent a year in the sanatorium in Madison, laying outside in the sun, getting the cure. He did live, she lived. But we're getting diseases. Okay, Somalia, government collapsed. They don't have birth records. The family is in charge of burying their dead within 24 hours. It's not reported to the government. How can you vet a person that wasn't born, that didn't die? They have a six-year education. However, it's not, it's not compulsory. So they can't read or write. They have an oral tradition. When they come here, they can't read or write. I went to the bathroom here, I washed my hands. It advised me to wash my hands for germ control. How many signs, how many languages do you want in all your bathrooms? I worked in an acupuncture clinic in Edina with Somalis. Oh my gosh. I could curl your hair. Curl your hair. Thanks.
And I, I'd also like to say that, um, for the benefit of the St. Croix County citizens, I'd like to restrict, uh, future comments to only those who live in St. Croix County. Uh, with all due respect to any else, anyone else who has traveled to speak tonight. Um, I believe, what was the next name I called? Rem, you can remind me.
I'm Roxanne Jorstad.
Roxanne, thank you.
I'm from New Richmond.
That will be followed by Debbie Segelstrom. I'm sorry? Who's that? Debbie, okay. Uh, let's try, uh, Duane Showbridge. Chippewa County. Okay. Uh, Joyce, uh, Allier? Not St. Croix County. All right. Harley Sane.
He's on deck.
Okay, we're good. I'm sorry, go ahead, Roxanne.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your service to St. Croix County. I request that you pause on the refugee resettlement. I attended the public hearing in Eau Claire and was appalled. The decisions in Eau Claire were made without citizen input. Proper procedures were ignored. And you need to hold Eau Claire accountable. You need to check into the legalities of what happened. It's never a good thing when people in office take the route of secrecy. Chippewa County was not happy. Chippewa and Barron County have taken action and paused on this resolution. I feel strongly that all municipalities need to take a long, hard look at the ramifications of refugee resettlement and taxation without representation. Here in St. Croix County, housing is not abundant. How will our schools be affected that are already full? How does this affect the welfare system? Who are these refugees? And how stupid is it that you can't tell us where they're coming from? What does that say about their organized vetting? They should know exactly where they're coming from. They should know their criminal records. I'm not against immigration. My descendants were immigrants who arrived and prospered in America. I'm against illegal immigration. I'm against public officials being paid under the table to take certain actions and vote a certain way. I'm against corrupt mayors, corrupt city councils, and corrupt county boards. We have a corrupt state and a corrupt nation. Today is a good day to do the right thing. Please investigate and hold Eau Claire accountable for making a decision that affects this 100-mile radius. Thank you.
Thank you. Harley, followed by Cindy Stockfus. Hope I'm close.
Okay, hello, I'm Harley Sane. I have nothing prepared in a speech, just sort of winging it here. I vote to pause it. There is no reason why we need to resettlement refugees here in our district. Our taxes are high enough, care about the children, focus on the schools, what they've been doing with COVID. We should really get back to that. Hold some people accountable. That still has yet to happen. This, this guy who did the presentation couldn't answer really any questions. Deflected a lot. Didn't really seem to have good answers. There's a lot of people here that don't want this, clearly. Should listen to the people who actually showed up and cares enough to come. And I work for the United States Postal Service. I'm not just a, a nobody to not be credible. Young enough to understand the politics and what's going on at our border. It is awful. See, I got 50 seconds. I'll just read a few headlines of some articles that even just popped up recently. Texas, the illegal immigrant indicted on capital murder charge and cheerleaders beating, stabbing to death. Let's see. Biden has secretly flown 320,000 illegals into the United States. I wonder if they were vetted, just like this program that they're working on here. Democrats work with NGOs to house migrants in illegal apartments as shelters overflow. So I wonder if our apartments and such will overflow here. No, this plan's horrible. Pause it, rescind it, cancel it. We don't need it here. Focus on our children we have now. Get our taxes lower, fix the public schools.
Thank you. Uh, Cindy? And that will be followed by Mary Hoxford.
Hi, um, my name is Cindy Stockfus and I live in the town of Hudson. Um, some people have covered, um, and documented a little bit, but I wanted to bring out a little bit more of it. And it is from the archives of the Muslim Brotherhood in America. And, um, real briefly, um, the supremist Islamic doctrine known as Sharia, such groups are hostile to this country, its constitution and its freedoms. The documents make clear the group's sole objectives are to implement Islamic law in America in furtherance of re-establishing the global caliphate. One of the most important of these documents made public to date was entered into evidence during the Holy Land Foundation trial. It amounted to the Muslim Brotherhood's strategic plan for the United States and was entitled an exploratory, an explanatory memorandum on the str- general strategic goal for this group in America. Skipping through, I, what I wanted to make the point about is that this following Muslim Brotherhood document was entered into evidence in the United States versus the Holy Land Foundation trial. And is a primary source document that provides new insights into the global jihad organizations like the Muslim Brotherhood. These documents are considered extensive, are covered in this document that anybody can find or we can get for you. And they should be considered as required reading by all of our public and local officials. Um, Sharia. The threat to America demonstrates a troubling reality. The Obama administration and its immediate predecessors in both political parties back in the 00s, along with many state and local governments, have been blind. In some cases, willfully so. And in every case, perilously so to the fundamental facts of the true nature of the enemy that we confront and what actually animates them and what we need to do to prevent their success. Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
I'm Mary.
You're Mary, okay, wow. Mary's going to be followed by Linda Saveland.
I'm Tom Hoxford, Mary's husband. Uh, I want to reiterate or emphasize the due diligence that's required. Uh, specifically three points around Mr. York's presentation. One is if you look at the vetting or the background check slide, you'll notice he said it's, it said health checks or background checks. Look at the first bullet on that slide. There's an "or" there. That means they could go in and say, yep, looks healthy, let them on in without any background check at all. The second thing is, is the financial. I would encourage you to ask specifically, what is the cost per refugee per year to the county? That specific number. If they don't have that, then they're in the wrong business. And, um, he implied, he was, he implied that the tax benefits or the tax growth would cover those costs. That's ridiculous. There is no way. There is absolutely no way. So that is, I would guarantee that's a false statement. Lastly, I'm, I, I'm going to ask that all of you be bold here. This is not easy. The eas, the path of least resistance for you is to say, yeah, there's nothing we can do. Throw your hands up, let it go, let it happen. You need to be bold. You need to listen to the people and what we want and make that happen. Put a pause, or I liked the other idea better, cancel it. Just say no. Just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Kind of have a little levity, right? Okay, Linda, Linda, and will be followed by Rick Mannan.
Hi, my name's Tom. I just want to agree with Mary that I would rather see it an end tonight to the whole subject. I support ending the conversation about refugee resettlement. Look at Minneapolis and then think about Hudson. Think about what the people want. It's not, nobody is asking for this. So say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rick? He, he left. Okay. Uh, well, let's, uh, how about Sarah Bachlin? Sarah happened to be with us. And Sarah will be followed by Steve Mail.
Hi, Sarah Bachlin, uh, I'm from the town of Troy. I just wanted to make a few comments. One that the resolution, a refugee resettlement resolution was brought to the county board a month ago, was sent to a committee, admin committee. That Supervisor Long, our chair, is on and it died in that committee. So I was a little confused about the statement that we want to bring it to a vote because we had that opportunity and it failed. We have established that the federal law was not followed. I think we all agree that local government does have the most control. And when federal and state government brings decrees that are unjust, it is your right and responsibility to step in for us, the people. And so that's what we're asking you to do. Mr., um, Supervisor Long mentioned that there's going to be a new, um, resolution written. My question is, who's on that board to write it? Can citizens be on it? Um, and who's taking that vote on it? There was stated that there's going to be a vote in a week. Who's, who's taking that vote? Is it everybody here? This rep, all of you represent our full county, right? And I would ask that the, the resolution not be symbolic. I know that Supervisor Long does not like symbolic resolutions. So hopefully it has some teeth in it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Steve? And, uh, followed by Teresa Chandler?
Hi, my name's Stephen Mail. I live in, uh, St. Joe. My wife was transferred up to this area in 2016 and I thought it was going to be a great thing. And, uh, shortly after we were transferred to this area and built a house in the beautiful St. Joe, uh, Hudson School District, built a fabulous, apparently, school at a high cost to all of its citizens. And now this building is being remodeled and extended, rebuilt at a cost to all of the citizens. And St. Joe is now building a new town hall. Apparently it's going to be a lot nicer at a cost to all of its citizens. And the, uh, federal government is borrowing to itself a hundred, or a trillion dollars every 100 days at a cost to all of the citizens. And currently each person in this room owns approximately $350,000 in debt to the federal government and yet they keep spending more money. And I'm just wondering where all this money is coming from. I'm glad, all of you guys are rich if you're going to vote yes on this. But I'm not rich. I'm just a retired cop. And I, uh, just, I'm, I'm concerned about people and their money and their finances and their kids. And it's really, where does this money all come from? How do we just keep printing money, spending money? I, I don't get it. So I, I think we really need to think about what we're doing to the people because this is all being passed down the road to all the kids, your kids, your grandchildren. I don't have grandchildren. I don't have, uh, grandchildren. So this is going on to your kids and I'm concerned about your kids. And I hope, I'm not more concerned about your kids than you are. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa? Will be followed by Jim Swenson?
Hello, I'm Teresa Chandler. I'm from Hudson. Um, and I think it's rather ironic that we have all of these people here from out of the county who want to tell us, um, what we should do when what they're talking about is like stopping people from coming in. So I just think that's ironic. Uh, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation about, uh, some of the things that they said. And I was a little surprised to hear actually one of the members of the board, like, being confused about whether it's, uh, refugees or the people coming across the border and all that kind of stuff because it's a very different thing. We're not talking about the, the Texas-Mexico border. And I, I agree and I understand that there's like a huge problem with, um, with illegal immigration. The amount of refugees. And if you actually just go to the site and you can look at, it was actually on the thing that you guys sent out. And if you go there, there's a bunch of information that you can read that actually answers a lot of the questions that were asked here. It's right there, so you can go and look at it and they have, you know, some financial stuff. I mean, just, so it will help you. It's, but it's all right there. And I would hope people would, uh, look at that before they decide to make up their mind about stuff. Uh, and there's also so much concern. Everybody's up here talking about Sharia law and Muslims and everything else. And he did tell where the, uh, where these refugees were coming from. They're coming, most of these are from Burma. They're coming, most of these are from Burma. And let me see, according to the most recent available estimates, approximately 88% of people in Burma are Buddhists. And 6% are Christians, primarily Baptist, Roman Catholics, and Angelicans, along with several small Protestant denominations. Mostly Sunni Muslims comprise approximately 4% of the population. Anyway, so I think that, I understand, I can hear a lot of the fear and concern with everybody here, but I would say that we live in, we live in a beautiful place, you know, San Diego County, Hudson, it's gorgeous, it's almost bucolic, right? And I, and I know we love it and we want to keep it that way, but what I'm hearing is we're just pretty on the outside. And I, there is so much to be gained from the rest of the world. You know, you want to go out and eat the Mexican restaurant, the Italian restaurant, and the, you know, and the Thai food and everything else, but you don't want to meet the people. And really, most of them are just like us. And there's dangerous people in this room as well, I can assure you. But I'm just, I-
Please wrap up, it's two minutes.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just heartbroken that we're here to make a resolution that officially says you're not welcome.
Okay, Jim Swenson will be followed by Peter Bernard.
I'm Jim Swenson, and I'm from the city of Barron, so I guess I don't follow-
Okay, thank you for letting us know, I appreciate that. Okay, Peter, it will be followed by Jason, hmm, what do you think? Jason Bir- Birch or Burton? Am I close?
You ready for me?
Yes.
Peter Bernard, Hudson. I was so excited when Mr. York mentioned this report from the Health and Human Services Department, the federal government. Why? Because what he said was true in the statement, in the document itself. And you all have a copy of the executive summary that I gave out, as well as the full report that I sent you last week. But let me just point out one thing. There's two bullet points in the executive summary, in the first, in one and the same paragraph. Overtime refugees and asylees make significant contributions to federal, state, and local government revenues. Okay, that sounds great, sounds like Mr. York, right? Further in the paragraph, it says, in the first federal study yet of refugees and asylees, so the first one since it's been enacted in 1980, they did a study of refugees between 2005 and 2019, over that 15-year period. They were refugees, were a net fiscal cost to state and local governments estimated to be $21 billion. Well, so for the rest of the story, and I forgot to bring that up with me, but I sent it out to you guys today, gentleman from Breitbart, Neil Monroe, I believe that's his name, yes, called out the fact that the report does not include a lot of intangible costs. Costs such as police and emergency services, social security, Medicare, Americans' wages and houses, housing costs that are impacted by these programs. That's for refugees and asylees, not immigration, okay? This is the federal government saying this. All right, so, I wanted to point that out to you. Over the last couple of days, I've been stepping back and asking myself, who are we? You know, if I think about what Thomas Jefferson said in 1776, said that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, referring to life, liberty, and justice, and happiness, it's the right of the people to alter and abolish it. I believe the citizens and local elected officials have the ability to decide on the refugee placement in their community. Otherwise, it is tantamount to taxation without representation. And yet, that's exactly what we have with the refugee resettlement program.
It's two minutes.
New opportunities, no opportunities for us or local officials to say no. Do we need to ask for permission to say no? Wasn't the ability to say no the basis for the foundation of this country? Indeed, we have the ability to say no.
And please wrap up, please.
Thank you.
Okay, Jason, boy, I'm not sure I got your last name right, so please correct me on that. After Jason will be Miriam Solinski.
Good evening, my name is Jason Burton. I live near New Richmond. I come to you bringing a slightly different view to consider. This whole refugee ordeal brings us all together here tonight, should have never happened. This illustrates a failure of many layers of government. The process had not followed the law or procedures, regardless how he spun it. The county sheriff of affected counties in question have not arrested incoming agents that have powered this in, that's a fail. The DAs have not pressed charges on these government and non-government players. Again, fail, the takeaway here. However you vote, and for whatever reason, if you choose to accept or draft any local policy accepting refugees under this attempt, you accept this legal process and scoff at the very legal fabric that you are supposed to uphold. This resets precedent, and you thereby undermine your own position in the future. This is why we, the people, distrust the government. Be part of the solution, make the buck stop here. Show others what backbone looks like. What is your legacy? America's first. Homeless vets outside, elderly eating cat food, underfunded women's shelters, we don't need more projects right now. And for those who want to welcome them in, sign up, open your doors, be the first to take in the first couple of families, show us what open doors are like. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've now actually gone over an hour, so this will be our last speaker for public comment. Miriam?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for giving me opportunity to speak. I'm Miriam, I'm proud to be American citizen, but originally I'm Filipino citizen from Philippines. I got my citizenship last year, and it takes me like five years and two and a half months to get it. And before I get it, I've been, I've been through a lot of hard time, like I'm going on a needle hole just to get it. And before that, I go on medical, what do you call it, fingerprints, background, family background, and the US Embassy asked me to, ah, sorry about that. US Embassy asked me to, asked my husband to have an affidavit of support, just to make sure that he can support me here in US and not relying on government money. And I'm not against on immigrants, because I'm one of it, but please do it in the right way, because I'm doing it in the right way. Someday I want to get my parents, but it's a lot of money, work, and they're old, they're already senior citizens. So as far as, as far as I know, I wish and I hope government people will help their own people. One of example is my husband. He's, he's on work, and he wants to go on emergency because he was in really pain, and he can't call an ambulance, because we all know how much is the ambulance cost is, and it's out of our pocket. So he was just sitting on his truck, and he's just dealing with his pain, and I called him, and I told him, go on Aldi store and look if there's a people there, and things get, there's a manager in there. And I really hope ambulance is supposed to be free, and please, government people, help your own people, not the foreign people. Thank you.
Okay, and I, my apologies to the balance of the citizens who were hoping to comment, I hope their, your comments were echoed in some of the other comments tonight. Set those aside. I think it might be appropriate that we take a quick five-minute break, we're going to reconvene at 7:30 sharp. Thank you.
Well, we have enough. Okay, we're gonna reconvene here. I'd like to keep going on our agenda, to keep rolling. I'd like a motion on the consent agenda, please. Supervisor Barcalow. Our second, and who is the motion? Supervisor Hanson. Well, that's okay. They had her hand up, I was looking at that way. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Vote.
Bob. Or Dave.
Dave. We're voting on the consent agenda. Supervisor Otino, we are currently voting on the consent agenda.
They might want to say we'll record him as a guest, and he can change it when he comes back. Or something like that.
Yeah. Okay, we, um, we're gonna move ahead. I'm gonna assume that Supervisor Anderson, oh, here he is. We need your vote Supervisor Anderson.
He might not pass.
All right, thank you very much.
That was a deciding vote, right there.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, we're back in session here, so let's, uh, cool the chatter. We're gonna move on to the recognition. And I'm gonna first let Administrator Witt, and then I've got some comments as well.
All right, speaking of chatter, um, we have a certificate of appreciation here for Supervisor Cook, thanking her for her two terms on the county board. And, uh, you know, really on behalf of the entire county board. We appreciate all the input that you've had over the last four years, and we'll miss you. So, thank you.
I would like to share a little story, if I may, because some of you may not be aware of this, but when Supervisor Cook and I both first ran for the county board, we ran against each other in District Six. And it was a very interesting result. At the end of the day, Kara was ahead by one vote. And then we added in the absentee ballots, and I ended up being ahead by two votes. So, the moral of that story is don't ever let anyone tell you that their vote doesn't count. Because it does. But I'm very, very honored that we were both able, and we went to different districts, and we were both able to serve at the same time. I was very privileged to serve alongside of you, Kara. I really enjoyed it, you did a great job, and the, the citizens of District Six, or Five, I'm sorry, were, uh, were very well-served, so thank you very much.
Can I say brief words? So, first of all, thanks, everybody, and thanks Chairman Long. It's been, um, great to serve as with you, and you have you as board chair. I just wanna say, um, thank you briefly again to all of the staff here at the county. You've all been so helpful every time I've had a question. I think the citizens of our county are just really lucky to have such amazing people serving them in all the different capacities that county staff serve on a daily basis. So, just thank you for that. I wanted to thank all my colleagues on the board for a lot of great conversation and discussion. We haven't always agreed, but that's okay, right? That's democracy, and so the ability to have those conversations and disagreements is, is amazing. And then finally, just thank you to, um, the citizens, really, of District Five. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as your representative. It's really been an honor and a privilege these last four years, so thank you. And, uh, I just appreciate this chance to be a part of this body and serve the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna roll right into the financial report. Administrator Witt?
Yeah, uh, the financial report's in the packet. It's only showing the, uh, the first month of data for the year, so probably nothing to highlight just yet. Considering everything else that we still have to cover tonight, I'll move along unless there's a specific question. Excellent.
Okay, we're gonna move right along. Okay, our first business item is basically the same issue that we've been talking about, consideration of providing direction to staff and drafting resolution on the refugee settlement. As I referenced earlier, this is our opportunity to talk about this issue in detail. Have a meaningful, thoughtful discussion so that we can provide feedback to Corporation Counsel. And in return for that feedback, she will be drafting, uh, a resolution. And then we will have the opportunity to review that resolution, and then we will get back together. We reconvene as soon as we can, probably, I'm guessing, early next week, to review that resolution and vote on that resolution. So, this is our opportunity to provide that feedback. I'm not able to participate in the discussion. However, I would like to at least make a comment that I would suggest that you include in your discussion the, um, the merits of the concept of a pause. Because there's, I think there's a lot of, um, misunderstanding of that particular concept of whether or not really has any meaning, because we're basically asking the federal government to do us a favor, which could be construed as a little bit of a pipe dream, but it's something that makes us feel good. So, you can decide whether or not to include that language in the resolution and in what context. But I, I think that's an important aspect that I would encourage you to discuss. Who would like to start? Supervisor Leaf?
I'd like to have Corporation Counsel tell us a little bit about what the law really is and what our jurisdiction really is.
So, I did send an email out to all the county board supervisors. I hope you had a chance to read it. It just went through what the supremacy clause of the Constitution indicates and what state and local governments are able to do if there is a federal law regarding an issue. So, as you all know, the Refugee Act of 1980 addresses refugee resettlement. There is a provision in there that says local voluntary agencies' activities should be conducted in close cooperation and advanced consultation with state and local governments. So, it says should be conducted, don't say shall be conducted, but obviously, it's a recommendation that it should be conducted. The one thing that I heard a lot about tonight is the hundred-mile radius. And so, there is no requirement in the actual Refugee Act of 1980, the federal law, that, um, communities within a hundred-mile radius be included in that cooperation and consultation. Obviously, it's probably good practice, good policy, but it's not a mandate by the federal government. So, um, I know I've been reading a lot of the other resolutions from Eau Claire County, Chippewa County, and that is one of the benefits of possible support of Senate Bill 916 and Assembly Bill 1004. Those have both gone through the Senate and Assembly. They're going to the governor next for approval or veto. But that proposed legislation would create a statute that would require the local volunteer agencies to communicate and consult with counties within the hundred-mile radius. So, that's what that state law would do. And so, I know there has been some resolution proposals about supporting and asking the governor to sign off and approve Senate Bill 916 and Assembly Bill 1004, as that would create the statute that would require these local voluntary agencies to cooperate and consult with the local counties. So, those are just two of the main things. I know that there's been requests to, um, like, order or demand the federal government to pause refugees being placed in the city of Eau Claire. You can recommend it, you can request it, but you can't mandate it. There's nothing the local government can do to tell the federal government they have to stop replacement of refugees here. So, I know that there's been comments about, you know, having a resolution with teeth. And you can request it, you can recommend it, but you can't mandate the federal government to stop the resettlement of refugees, um, in Eau Claire. And so, I can answer any additional questions, but hopefully I answered your question Supervisor Leaf.
Supervisor Carlson?
I believe it's not just symbolic. Tom Tiffany, Congressman, has a bill that says, if it passes all the way, who knows? But it says if a local community objects, that it won't. And so, this gives, they can't put them in. And this gives us, um, gives him help in his bill that local communities are already standing up, and he can say, "I pointed out." And sure, there's a supremacy clause, but I reject that the supremacy clause allows, um, the federal government, I'd love to see it in court, that allows the federal government to say, "You have to take a foreign national in your neighborhood." We got the Tenth Amendment protecting our rights. Our sheriff certainly can object, he is the head constitutional person. So, um, I really think we need to pass this, um, for those reasons.
Supervisor Ramberg?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share a few words that I circled as the night was going on, some of the ooh-ah moments that I had. Well, and I've always felt that we're a melting pot, not a salad bowl. And I see this picking, you know, that we wanna avoid, that it sounds like the federal government is allowed to happen. But I, I did appreciate the welcome corpse position that was up there, because that sounds very similar to the farmers we have in the county, where they sponsor their workers and are responsible for them and help them, and they are kinda like the coach. And that is what I think those that have had successful stories, they have, they have that entity there. So, I don't know if, it's something we can incorporate in there, but it's more of a, again, what we want rather than what we need. If we could express our disappointment and copy these federal agencies of our disappointment, so at least it, it shows our intent. And again, our intent versus the content, if they could put in this, uh, our support of the bills that are out there, too. We, in this resolution, that would have some meat in my mind that we would support these state bills out there that, that do this. I would support that. Couple more words I heard is the purpose. Maybe, maybe it met the requirements, but not the purpose. If we could get to the purpose, which again is the intent, not the content. Purpose, input, impact study, vetting, and support bills. Those are the, I already said support bill. But those are the words that I was jotting down, that if we could incorporate in these, I think that would have some impact for the reader and, and the federal government, anyway. If we could send it to some of those departments or entities that have some say. Thank you.
Supervisor Otino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're dealing with a very small percentage of the whole entire issue here, because that's why I asked specifically about that definition, from legal, illegally admitted, to illegally. And the 125,000, uh, number that the threshold for the federal government is, and I got this information from the Hill, there's a total of 10.2 million, estimated from the Hill, of illegals that have come across the border. So, if we're talking about 125,000 that the federal government has allowed to come in legally, we're only talking about 1.2% of this overall problem. We're really not talking about the concern, I think, that a lot of people have, that this is the flood of illegals coming at us. And I don't know how we're gonna prevent that with the definitions that we're stuck with from the federal government and the state government. But, uh, the only other way to put any teeth in this is to, uh, not commit any single dollar from the counties, period. From our county. That's, that's the only teeth I can see to put into it. So, that's my opinion, thank you.
Supervisor Burning, did you have your?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, I would like to echo the sentiments of several of the board members here tonight. I think it's very important that we support Congressman Tiffany, Congressman Van Orden, and the gentleman from Texas who is proposing the legislation to allow local governing bodies to have more of a say in what happens in this, in this federal process. So, I think that's important, to support that. I'd like, I would like to see, and I'd like to be part of drafting a resolution in support of that particular bill that's in the House, or being introduced into the House right now. I don't know if it's in committee or not, but, um, I do know it was introduced. I did see the press release several weeks ago on that. As far as supporting the two bills that are, that just passed the Assembly and the Senate, I am with Supervisor Ramberg. I believe we need a resolution. And I'd like to see that in a meeting, if we decide to do one in a week, or whatever it is, that we get that there so that the governor can, um, can sign it and see. And I think we should share it with other counties in the state of Wisconsin, that we need to, uh, have, most of the taxation and the burden of governing and governance happens at the local level in the state of Wisconsin. It's just how we're set up. It's the civics of things. We need to have a bigger say in things. So, um, I would support a, um, resolution supporting that legislation be passed by the governor. As far as, uh, a resolution putting a pause on refugee resettlement in the area, I think it's very important that we pass something of that nature that goes into the federal record. I did some research over the last few weeks, and I talked to, um, former elected officials, former local leaders that have been involved in many, many, many different controversial issues. And one in particular came to mind, and that was when a casino was gonna, was, the idea of a casino coming to Hudson to replace the dog track was floated around. Now, that was quite some time ago. I'm starting to get old, and it seems like that was just yesterday, but my kids remind me, I'm a boomer, and I don't remember things quite well anymore. That particular issue, there were some deep impacts from just a city councilman sending a letter on letterhead on his own fruition, sending it to the agency in charge of looking at that approval process. And it was entered into the official record and taken into account as the city of Hudson being, uh, objecting to a casino going in. No vote by the council, no, no, no committee passed that. And it was entered into the federal record. So, the statements that we make by resolution sometime may look symbolic by nature, but have a deep impact on how federal bureaucracies and agencies navigate and, and steer in the direction that they go. So, I think it's important that whatever we put in this resolution, and I'll state off some ideas here, um, you know, have statement of direction that we want them to go in. My opinion, I think we need to push for pause of resettlement. And I think we need to push for pause of resettlement mostly because some of the reasons I have written down here. For one thing, we have a crisis of illegal immigration and the southern border that is, uh, showing significant challenges across this country. Human trafficking, fentanyl, drugs, not to mention people that are just here that we don't know the intentions that they have for this country. We don't just open our doors at our house and let people waltz in and out as they, as they so choose. That is our domain, and it's a violation of this country. I think we should put a pause on refugee resettlement, just simply put, we don't have control of our own borders, we don't have control of our spending. We don't have the money in this body to deliver the mandated services that our state requires us to do, including, but not limited to, providing enough law enforcement to keep our citizens and our residents and our visitors safe. We're literally putting a referendum in front of the people, asking for almost a million more dollars, and then we're gonna continue to let people pour across the border. We're gonna let, um, the federal government continue to, I, one of the gentlemen said, "Just print money, a trillion dollars every 100 days." I, I don't even know if I got that many points playing Mario Brothers, and that's like fictitious, right? So, that's, to me, that in of itself is enough to put a pause on something of the sort. Local governments are already stretched, um, at levy limits. Uh, I think we need to put this, this pause in place, and I've got some language written down that I'd like to see in it, but I think it really needs to be, uh, that language needs to be put in there without a doubt. And I think that this body will be, um, will, will, will be resolved to, to pass something like that. So, I think three separate resolutions, one for, um, the House resolution that's been presented, one asking the governor to pass Assembly Bill and the Senate Bill, uh, the, the bill that's in, in front of him right now, and one asking for a pause with the stated reasons, mostly economic. That's all I got, Mr. Chair. I hope that's enough.
Supervisor Carlson?
Thank you, Chairman. Oh, after tonight, I'm more convinced than ever that we need a pause. After our education, he said things that, um, relief didn't say to us, that was, uh, different. The whole process has just been horrible. It's, it's just been, uh, it stinks. It starts off with the administrative state, which people hate. They hate the administrative state. They complain about that in Washington, that the politicians aren't doing something, the administrative state. We start off with the administrative state setting up a refugee process without talking to elected officials. I am convinced that we would have never known about it if it didn't come out in October from the journalist. They would have just kept going, put the people in, and all of a sudden, they're here, and we don't get a say. We're county supervisors, we're not supposed to be supervising the people. We're supposed to be supervising the county and the government to protect the people. And part of that protection, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, and that includes their money. If we invite them in, what we're doing is saying, "This is my charity. I wanna have these people in, I wanna be charitable to them. Give me your money, and take your taxpayer money and give it to them." When we have, just here in St. Croix County, you'll, you'll see later in the, uh, in the, uh,
Thank you.
You'll see later in the, uh, report, oh, what's it called? Home for All. And this document spells out how we already have a severe shortage of affordable housing here. Some of our towns have up to 60% of people in the poverty. And if you heard the term "ALIS," um, I forget exactly what it means, but it's especially older people that don't have enough money to pay their rent. They're paying more than 30%. We're just having a horrible time paying for housing, but then we're gonna tell the people that, "But we're gonna take more of your mon- the people that, but we're going to take more of your money and give it to people from a foreign country to come in first. And we're not protecting the people when we do that. And then even here in St. Croix County, I don't think the process has been good. It went to Admin Committee twice. I have never seen, granted I'm a neophyte, but I've never seen what we're doing here right now, where we're going to talk about the resolution and then give it to, give it to Corp Counsel to, and then we come back in a week. The process has always been, you give it to committee. But then in committee, it was, it was tabled, and then, then we even heard it. And that's despite a congressman speaking to it and all the people showing up, and more and more are showing up. The process that we put them through is what angered all these people and brought them here. They didn't know that you were going to have a, a plan to talk about it today and then in a week have another meeting, nothing. So they come here thinking that you're punting it down because you wouldn't even put it, you wouldn't even put it on the agenda. So it's been tabled, it's been refused to put on agenda, then it's refused to put on another agenda, and that's just not good governance, in my opinion. We, we kind of failed them. I got so many emails where people were upset. Number one question was, why did Chairman Long refuse to put it on the agenda? I got that question time and time again, and I had to tell them, I don't know why. It seems like a no-brainer to protect our people, to let them have their money, not us take it and give it to people from another country. If you, if they come in and there's a group of immigrants across the street, I am going to be their biggest supporter to make them successful here, because that's individual people that are here. I want them to assimilate, become American successfully, I'll be their biggest advocate. Do whatever we can, for the religious people, show them the love of Christ and do whatever we can. But that's a separate issue than inviting them in, somebody you don't know, and then telling the people in our area, you gotta pay for it. So we need to do this resolution to protect our people.
And let's keep our comments focused on what we want to include in the resolution, please. And, okay, I won't go there. Supervisor Shirley, did you have a comment?
Yes, I will agree with Supervisor Burning that I think we need to handle this in the, the way of finances and the other burdens that we already have. To tell the federal government that they did or did not, we don't know if they did it correctly or not completely, it's, it's not going to go anywhere. And I, I would say that I appreciate the process of us talking about this, figuring it out, and then coming up to a resolution, because I like this process a lot better than what was presented to Admin. Because I'll say it as it is, the original resolution was horrible. It was not well crafted, and I think that we can do better.
Supervisor Barkalow.
Thank you, Chairman Long. You know, as, as a, as a person myself, you know, we're a very open, accepting family, you know. In our own family, we have, we've allowed a Bears fan and a Vikings fan. And, but in all seriousness, if you, if you look back at history, it, from, I think it was 1890 to 1956, we've allowed 12 million people to assimilate into our culture. And in the last three years, conservatively, we've allowed 7 million and realistically, probably closer to 15 million come across our border illegally. And that is an assault on the taxpayer itself, it's an assault on our federal government and local and state governments. And so I think the way we are being forced in this, and our only way to combat it would be to fiscally say, we're not going to be a partner to any social services or safety nets that this county has set up for its own constituents. So that's all I've got to say, and...
Supervisor Fiedler.
Just to kind of respond to something, you know, the chairman said earlier he didn't want to, couldn't participate in the debate, I think he can't participate in the debate if he'd like to, and would welcome that if he did, because there's nothing that prevents him from doing so. But I think if I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think his thought was, this is a huge issue, it's very important to everybody, and we, one, need to educate. Well, we had that about two hours ago, four an hour. Then we needed to discuss with the goal of providing guidance to the corporate counsel to provide a resolution. So we've heard many, many different opinions, we've heard different options on how to proceed, both procedurally and substantively. And then the next step was preparation and vote. So educate, discuss, provide guidance, prepare a resolution, and vote. Pretty logical progression. Now, it's conceivable, other reasonable people could say, it could have been done faster. Put the thing on the agenda for tonight and debate it, and we could debate it, and maybe about 9:30 we'd resolve something with input from 19 people, and you know how that goes, it's resolution by committee, how you design a camel, it's, what's a camel, a horse designed by committee, something like that. You know, so this provides the corporation counsel time to absorb our input, which is everybody's had great input, it's been thoughtful discussion, thoughtful input from everybody. I just want to throw out, and again, our goal was to provide guidance, I'll just share what I've heard tonight, and if people, again, we want to give some flexibility to corporate counsel to build this in to a document, but what I've heard from Supervisor Ramberg was disappointment that we weren't consulted, and we can phrase that strongly or weakly. We want more input, we want to talk about the impact on us and a possible study of that impact. We want to support the bills that have passed the Assembly and the Senate. Supervisor Bernie mentioned that, that basically it's SB 916 is the vehicle. As I understand it, it'll be transmitted to the governor in about three weeks. Why, ask me why there's that delay, I can't tell you. It's the way our Senate proceeds in the state of Wisconsin. Next, support the Tiffany bill. Tiffany bill is the toughest thing on the table. Tiffany bill says, hey, amends the Federal Refugee Act, which is the bottom line, baseline, which corporate counsel talked about earlier. It is the supreme law that guides us, that only they can impact. Tiffany's introduced an amendment last week, very simple, it says before you can put refugees into a local government, into a local community, the local government has to approve it, period. That's effectively what it says in about three sentences. So you'd add that in, and you add in the request for a pause. So that's six parts, disappointment, input, impact, Senate bill in Wisconsin, federal bill Tiffany, and ask for a pause. And if the corporation counsel can work with those six guidelines, if that's what we think we've said, then she can go to work, it'll probably take her two, three days to really work through it and get the language right, because I think Supervisor Shirley was exactly right. The first couple of resolutions that were passed, and those have been passed in other counties, they were good efforts, but they weren't quite legally correct. And so we need to get it correct if we're going to put St. Croix County's name on it and our names on it. So I would just suggest, if you've received enough input, if, I mean, I don't want to cut anybody off, but if you think I've captured it and the corporation counsel thinks she understands where we're going, I think we've pretty much concluded item one on the business
Supervisor Adams.
Chair, I'd like to ask the corporate counsel, from what you just heard from Supervisor Fiedler, is there something in there that implies, as soon as word of this happens, it must come to our administrator, or you, or the chair, you know, somebody at the top tier, right off the bat, you know, as an initial gate? That's something I want in there.
Yes, so we can take the language from Senate Bill 916, because that is exactly what the bill recommends and proposes in the proposed statute. So I can use the language right from the Senate Bill 916 to indicate that local governments have to be immediately consulted and collaborated with, and that has to be all factions, the designated person. So, and that would include not just county, it would include county administrator as our designated individual, but also the local municipalities also, is what the bill includes. So I can include that language in a resolution. Can I just ask, does everybody know what the CARE Act says? That's the bill that's been proposed by Tiffany, or Tom Tiffany. It's very short and to the point, that it says, "The resettlement of any refugee may not be provided for in any locality where the chief executive of the locality's government or the local legislature has taken any action formally disapproving of resettlement in that locality." So basically, that, that bill is very strong. And so if that's what you want to support as a, as a county board, then that's the language I would add to a resolution, supporting that bill.
Or do you have a question, and then I'll get to Supervisor Cook, sorry. Go ahead and...
I just have a question for Heather. So the Senate bill that's in the state senate, the one you just referenced, talks about consulting, collaboration. It doesn't say anything about local government denying refugees.
The Senate bill?
Yeah.
The Senate bill does not, and that's just because of the supremacy clause, the state...
Right. Because that would be illegal.
Correct.
Supervisor Cook.
So it sounds like I'm in the minority here, but I just have to, want to offer my opinion, what I think should be in the resolution. I don't think it's appropriate that we're asking for a pause. We've heard clearly from our corporation counsel that that is in violation of the federal law at this point. So asking for a pause is just, I just don't feel that's appropriate. We've heard a lot of comments about refugees over the past few meetings, and everyone's entitled to their opinion, I respect everyone's opinion, but to be honest, they're a little disheartening. This country was, our history of our country is folks coming to this country, escaping persecution from the beginning of the country. We have an amazing, a wonderful country, and it's built on folks that are basically doing the same things that refugees are doing, they're escaping persecution, we heard that from Mr. York. So, and look at how amazing our country is, we've, it's the best country in the world. So the fact that we are communicating that we don't want refugees here is very concerning to me. I also would not support, including the Tiffany bill in here, I don't see how it's up to local government to say no to refugee, refugee resettlement, excuse me. I would support a language that includes additional communication. It here, it sounds like, based on the conversation and the feedback we've heard tonight, there was maybe a drop in the communication and the process as far as how Eau Claire and everybody were, the information was shared about refugees coming here. So I think a resolution that includes more dialogue and information sharing is great, but I would, I'm just opposed to any type of pause or support of the Tiffany resolution. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson.
I am fully in support of the three resolution idea, especially, and if we only pass one, I completely agree respectfully with Supervisor Cook. If we only pass one, it would be supporting Tiffany's, Tiffany's bill. Obviously, I, I, I think if that one passes, though, we would support all three, but I'm, I'm fully in support of the three resolutions we, we've discussed between Supervisor Fiedler, Supervisor Ramberg, Supervisor Burning. I just, it seems like the right solution in my mind.
And I'd like to ask a question now, if I may. This concept of three separate resolutions or one inclusive resolution, where are you at on that?
You're asking, nobody's shown. Could we get more clarification on what these three resolutions would state?
Yeah, the three resolutions, one is support of Tiffany's legislation, the CAREs. One is in support, recommendation to the governor to sign Senate Bill 916, and one of them is, is specific to the pause. And I think the pause one probably will have some other components to it, talking about, you know, the failure of communication from Eau Claire and other things. So two of them are just supportive legislations out there, and the other one is the broader one with the pause in it.
Supervisor Anderson.
Yeah, just, just real briefly, the reason I think three is the way to go is because it kind of prevents each one from getting muddled. You won't see, you won't have somebody reading something that they don't view as relevant to them and maybe skip something else in there.
Okay, Supervisor Shirley.
I'll agree with that too, but I would say that we do need the three resolutions solely because in my mind, not only do we need to support those resolutions, or those other, those other bills, but say, one or both fail, then our resolution going to the federal government on resettlement, they're going to look at that and be, well, they're supporting two failed bills, it waters down our position that, you know, not only did our state legislator, our state disagree with us, but so did the federal government.
I'm kind of, yes, Supervisor Vance-Hamron.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of things. One is, we haven't addressed funding at all in our resolution. There, there should be a clause in there for funding or for not funding, or for whatever. That's it. The second thing is the idea of that we don't need a pause. And in respect to what the corporate counsel said about, we can't really tell the federal government what to do, in Mr. York's response to a question that someone over here made about will, will doing a pause do any good, will, will coming up with a pause do any good? He said, well, it may not, but, but, he said, it will bring about a conversation. And maybe that's what we need the most, is a conversation, so that they understand where we're coming from, and we could ignore where they're coming from.
So, so I'm getting, I'm getting the sense that everybody pretty much is, wants to go down the road of three separate resolutions. Supervisor Burning?
As per the usual.
Maybe two seconds.
Okay, no, hey, 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 easy, all right. Mr. Chair, so I just want a point of clarification from Corp Counsel. Supervisor Cook said that you had mentioned it was illegal to tell the, the federal government, or to ask, tell them that we want a pause. Is that actual fact, or?
It's not illegal, it just doesn't have any, it's not mandated.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So we can, we can recommend them, we don't want...
Yeah, they, they don't have to follow our authority.
Correct.
We tell them to jump, they don't have to say how high.
Correct. And I just wanted to clarify that, because we don't have any, like, legal cause of action that we could file against the federal government.
Understood. Yep, I just, I heard that and I didn't know if it would, like, there, yeah, I just want people maybe at home watching, or people here to understand that we, we can tell the federal government to do anything that we want to tell it to do, it's not illegal to do that, it's, they can, there are certain areas that they can just go, no thanks, that's nice. So, and then I wanted to, there was one other, oh no, that's a different matter, but anyway, three resolutions, yes, that's, I support that.
Supervisor Carlson?
Yeah, just a little bit of clarification, are we including the statement that we're not going to fund? I, I would say we can't do that, because if they do get put in here, we have to fund them. Yeah, if they're here, we fund them. So for us to say, oh, we're not going to fund them, they'll just, whatever, you know, because we have to fund them. Otherwise, it's just cruelty in a way. You know, if they're here, we got to be good hosts and help them out, so.
I think we can address that topic, if you guys like, by saying that if you do place refugees here, that you will provide the funding for them. I think that satisfies both positions.
Thank you. You're wise.
Okay, yeah, money, 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 we never have enough. Does anybody have any other comments, any other perspective that they would like to share? I think we've got some, some really good ideas, and I think they're very worthwhile, and we're going to go down that road unless there's any objection. Do we, do we need a vote?
So I think, I think what would be appropriate is for somebody to make a motion to wrap this all up into a bow, and say, we would like three resolutions, prepared by Corp Counsel, signed off by the county chair, and presented at a special county board meeting next Tuesday.
It's not an action item, but...
This is an action item.
It says, well, it says consideration. I think Supervisor Burning is going to say it's not a voting item, but I think it is a voting item to give direction to me as to what to do, and we do need a vote if there's going to be a special meeting, because we need a majority.
Thank you.
So would someone like to make that motion? Supervisor Burning, second, Supervisor Shirley.
I would like to know what I'm motioning, since I didn't state the motion, so Corp Counsel, would you read that to me, so I know if I want to motion it?
I can't even remember what Ken said. Okay, I think you are making a motion to direct the corporation counsel to draft three I can't even remember what Ken said. Okay, I think you are making a motion to direct the corporation council to draft three resolutions addressing the refugee resettlement as discussed today, and that a special meeting be scheduled of the county board next Tuesday at 5:00 PM.
Three resolutions, right? And all three to be considered at the, at a meeting to be called a week from today at 5:00 PM?
Correct.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, I guess we're ready to vote. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you very much. That was a great discussion. I think we've got a great plan of attack. All right, we are going to move on. We got a lot to cover, and we're going to try to clip this along as quickly as we can. Resolution to recommend adoption of the St. Croix County Comprehensive Plan, Community Development. Do we have a motion? Supervisor Shirley, second. Supervisor Hanson. Would one of you like to, to explain this, please?
All right, community development process started November 1st, 2022. It included a survey that University of River Falls did, and an open access survey. We had a total of about 670 respondents. There were three public open houses, 10 community development committee work sessions. There was a public hearing, and there was unanimous recommendation by the community development committee that you approve this. It's been a great deal of work for a long time. Is it, is it perfect? We hope so, but we doubt it. Everything, everything could, could be improved. And if you have any questions, we have, we have staff here and we will work to answer your questions, but it's a, it's a piece of work that we're proud of. So that's my, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
We have the discussion or questions on the comprehensive recommendation of the comprehensive plan. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm sure everybody read it word for word, right? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Okay, thank you. That motion is passing unanimously. Very similar, number three, ordinance to adopt the St. Croix County 2024-45 Comprehensive Plan. We have a motion for this, for the adoption of the plan. Supervisor Shirley, Supervisor Hanson is second. Okay, so we had so much discussion on this issue before. Would anybody like to make a comment, or are we ready to vote? Yeah, we'll go ahead and, yes, ready to vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I know there's a lot of work that went into that, so thank you for that. What's that?
I'd, I'd like to recognize the staff that did just a tremendous job, the planning staff, the director, just, and, and right on down the line, the corporation council. I thank everybody.
Right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to number four, resolution supporting 2024 Wisconsin DNR stewardship grant application for Glen Hills. Supervisor Hanson, you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt this resolution.
And a second, Supervisor Austinis, who would like to have provided explanation. Go ahead, Supervisor Hanson.
All right, this is for Glen Hills Peninsula Campground for Shower and Restroom Sanitary System. It's a priority project of the Outdoor Recreation Plan. The grant amount is 50%, and it requires a match of 50%, which is $249,500. So would appreciate you to support that. And this is also a unanimous vote of the committee.
Supervisor Anderson.
I just want to add that the $249,000 matching grant is already budgeted for this year. Already in the kit for this year, sorry.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Everybody's got their little thing they want to vote. Maybe we should start these meetings at eight o'clock, and we can roll right through these items pretty quickly. Okay, that resolution passes. Thank you. We're going to move on to the resolution supporting submission of a targeted resource management grant for the Kinnick River watershed. Supervisor Hanson. Supervisor Vance Summerlin, second. I got to look.
Excellent.
Okay, who would like to describe this?
This is a, this is a mouthful, but a targeted runoff management area is exactly that. The upper Kinnick watershed is, it's for reducing the total, total maximum daily load of phosphorus, which would eventually run from the Kinnick to the St. Croix River. And what this does is it offers grants, which then would be matched 30% by farmers or landowners to improve their properties, to reduce phosphorus. The, the grant is for $375,000 for cost share for best practice methods for implementing these things, like grassy waterways, or building up a easement, conservation easement, and $150,000 for support staff for three years. The county's contribution is in kind, so there is no financial impact to the budget. So this is an easy yes. So, thank you.
Questions, discussion? Seeing none, oh, Supervisor Barlow.
Just clarification. So is this like Hammond-Roberts area? I'm trying to think of where this watershed technically is, as far as farmland.
This is the Kenny Headwaters and Packer Creek subwatersheds. Does that, does that answer it? I can, I can find somebody who could actually answer that in more detail.
Good evening. So it's a total of 174 square miles, basically in the southwest corner of the county. So any conservation practices that we can work with landowners to implement on their property will have that 70-30 cost share.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, seeing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. All right, we're making progress. Number six, a resolution establishing compensation for elected officials for the years 2025 through 2028. Supervisor Cook.
A motion to approve that.
Motion to approve. We have a second, Supervisor Austinis. Supervisor Cook, would you like to take this one?
Sure, and after any details, I'll defer to Ken. So this is basically, we need to establish a compensation for elected officials, not county board supervisors, but for the county clerk, the county treasurer, and the register of deeds. And so this is for years 2025 to 2028. So basically, the resolution is doing some changes to the level of compensation to kind of reflect what's going on as compared to other counties, and also to just make sure that it's competitive, really, and we're making sure we're in, we're in line with some of the other counties that are around us. So there's an increase over the various years here, and then we have to approve this before the 2020, before the papers are filed, right, for 2025? Okay, so.
Yeah, the deadline's April, so now is when you need to approve it.
Supervisor Leaf, did you?
Yeah, I was interested in the amendment option that was presented in, it's in a packet form here, but adding a little more additional compensation to make it in line with a step 28, I think it was. Maybe you can explain that.
Yeah, I'll just point out, in treasurer, Denise Anderson is here, who sent that email out. I'll just point out that the resolution was prepared that's fair and equitable, looking at external and internal comparables. So it's, it's a reasonable proposal that was submitted to you. So the treasurer has requested something higher, and she's here. She would like to come up and, and speak to that. I would offer that to you as an option, but.
So I was amending it. I was moving to amend to add the increase.
So what increase are you looking to add?
The, to step 20, whatever the step, yeah, step 28. Yeah, it was like maybe $6,000 or $1,000 between the three of them.
Yeah, so I'm not sure exactly what the proposal is. When I read it, I couldn't tell exactly what the request was.
Okay, well, then I have no idea what to do. So then, never mind.
If you could clarify me what the exact request is, I could tell you what that analysis is, but.
We will offer to hear from our county treasurer, Denise, if you would like, at least give you that opportunity.
Thank you, Chair Long, and good evening. I wasn't really prepared to speak too much about it, but I did kind of provide all of that analysis in there. I thought I made it pretty clear. I was, I did find that the data, looking at pay grids from the surrounding counties and where they fell with comparable positions in those counties, it lands in the same spot as a grade 28 on the St. Croix County grid. So, and then it also shows that that's where these positions were compensated in 2016 and prior. I think they've fallen behind with the last couple of proposals, so that was my recommendation. And that, right underneath that table that I sent you, it shows a 28, 2025, it shows these amounts here. If we were at 2024, if we were at a level 28, it would be that the compensation would be 89.711. And then I just simply did basic math based on percentages that have been passed in the surrounding counties, and applied those to that 28 level.
Okay, so you're asking for $96,000 through $105,000 from 2025 to 2028? Is that what the ask is?
Well, yes.
Okay, so that would be an 18% increase in the first year, and then 3.33.
That and a motion to this amendment. And I would need a second to that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Could you clarify that?
No, I'm amending to that, those, those figures that were just stated, that Ken just stated, 18, three, three and three.
Yeah, Supervisor Leaf is, is moving to change the resolution in the packet for the dollar amounts for the four years to be the $96,000, $99,000, $102,000, $105,000.
Thank you, because my brain is no longer functioning.
And that was a motion to amend, correct? And is there a second? Supervisor Burning. Discussion. Excuse me.
So to clarify for you, the first year increase then is an 18% increase, and then a 3.33% increase over those final three years. I will tell you, so the treasurer is using grade 28 on the wage grid, something that they selected as their comparable rate. If we compare it to other treasurers, clerks, and register of deeds across Wisconsin, this would put them right up in the top two or three in the state. You guys are welcome to do whatever you like. I mean, I don't want to, you know, tell you not to do something. I just want you to do it with knowledge of where it places you.
Supervisor Hanson.
How many of you remember how much money the registered deeds has saved us over the last, not just saved us, but brought into the county with the efficiencies over the last couple of years? Just spent tremendous amount of money. How much, what's the increase percentage-wise for the first year, the way the resolution is written?
6%.
Six, and then how much in the next subsequent years?
Yeah, so it's, it averages to 4% a year. The current resolution is 4% a year. The amendment would be 26%. Total, over the four years. So 14% or, sorry, 16% compared to 20, it's late. Even I'm forgetting numbers now.
Okay, Supervisor Carlson, please, just a ballpark, but how much in the first year would this cost us?
I'll calculate in just a second. Give me a moment. $43,902. For the first year.
Comments, questions? Okay, so we're now ready to vote on an amendment to the original resolution for the increased numbers. Are we ready to vote on that? Amendment passes. Correct? Correct. Okay, so now we have an amended resolution with higher dollar amounts. Any other discussion on the amended resolution? Okay, we're ready to.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Burning.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry. So that was a close vote, and I think, well, I brought it as a second for discussion. I should have spoken up and said we should have, we should have found a compromise on that big of a dollar amount. I think it would be prudent to, a little bit more slowly over two years, take an increase of that nature. Putting us in the top two or three, we are going to referendum for operating dollars. We're voting on operating dollars. We're paying that. That's not state compensated. So that's a big increase. I, I think we should find something that's a little bit more palatable year one, another increase in year two, and then go with the ones in three and four. So that, that, do, do we need a motion to discuss something like that, or are we?
We, we would need a motion to amend again.
Yeah, I know. I'm thinking about that.
So the current rate for 2024 is at 82,254.
Absolutely, Gordy.
Thank you. I think typically, when these resolutions come up, that first year very typically has a way larger percentage increase based on the fact that those positions for the past four years had their salary set and received no, none of the COLA or step increases that everyone else working for the county received. So typically, not that they're that big, but typically, on that first year is always a bigger one to make up for what was lost over the last four years that everyone else working for the county had the advantage of receiving. That's all I just wanted to point out.
Thank you for doing that.
Supervisor Hanson?
Red light went on and then it went off. There's a lot of demand for, for these positions, and they're not all elected positions. These are really talented people in professional positions that, that if they chose to leave the county, could and find jobs that would pay them more next month. And if we value them, we should compensate them according to the market. And I know that Ken is comparing them to other counties in Wisconsin, but I'm also thinking about clerks' jobs in cities and not just, not, not just around here, but you can look in Minnesota. I have family members who do these job searches all the time, trying to improve themselves, and there are jobs available that pay more than this, and they're, they're available all the time. So if we value these people, we should, we should pay them, and I think it's a fair price.
Okay, other discussion, we're still back to the, Supervisor Burning? We're still back to the amended resolution unless anyone would like to make a further amendment to, for any compromised amounts, is what I heard. Okay, let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry, the, the main motion was Supervisor Cook, and Supervisor Burning was the second, I believe.
Are we voting on the amendment, or are we voting on the original?
We're voting on the original as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, that amended resolution passes. Thank you. All right, we're making progress. We are down to our last business item, the resolution amending the 2024 budget for referendum education. Supervisor Cook, would you like to, motion to approve? We have a second. Second Supervisor Fiedler. Who would like to discuss this one? Supervisor Cook?
I can start. So basically, at our admin committee meeting, we talked about the communication plan for the upcoming referendum, the public safety referendum, and had conversations about the cost. There was money in the budget to do some communication. We talked about potentially having a direct mailer as well, which increased the costs. And so this resolution is essentially to add, it's a budget amendment to add $5,000 of fund balance to help cover the added expenses of the communication plan for the public safety referendum.
Questions, discussion? Supervisor Burning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My position on this is I think the referendum should stand on its own merit. If citizens or groups that are for or against it want to learn more about it, they should contact their representative. I think the county's informational piece on the website is a bit over the top for a basic description of what's going on. I think it leans towards the, not just education of what the referendum is for, but really pushing a yes vote to it. I think, well, I know, I don't think on this, I know I will be voting no on this, and I would encourage Mr. Chair, other supervisors, to follow suit and allow this referendum to stand on its own merit, and us as elected officials field the questions and allow us to do the, exactly what we're required by law to do, and that's it.
Supervisor Shirley?
I would completely agree with that. We just got done with the resolution doing, I think, was the right thing to increase for those positions. Now to go on top of that now and ask for additional fund balance to, to cover education when, like Supervisor Burning said, if anybody has questions, they should be contacting their elected officials and doing it that way rather than us spending additional funds on top of what we already just did.
Supervisor Hanson?
Does the law, the law allow for us to do this education?
Yeah, I mean, what you're not allowed to do is to lobby. What you are allowed to do is to educate, though. So, I mean, there's a fine line, but it's allowable.
So what Supervisor Burning suggests is we do what the law allows, then perhaps we should do this.
Supervisor Burning?
In no uncertain terms am I suggesting that we pass this resolution.
Supervisor Cook?
So the budget amendment is basically asking for $5,000. I don't know about the rest of my fellow colleagues here on the board, but often I think when you go out and do door knocking and talk to folks, there's a lot of questions about what the county even does. We're asking potentially the constituents in our districts to vote on a public safety referendum, which is, you know, significant. And so we have a communication plan currently that's going to focus on using our website, sharing information in that manner. But the reality is that we know that not everyone in our districts go online. They don't go on the website, they might not go to the county website, they might not follow what's happening there. This is an opportunity to send out information to the constituents in our districts who might not be online, maybe they don't even have access to be online, to go out and see and find out information about this upcoming referendum, so they have information. And so when they go to vote, they can decide. They may decide not to vote for it, they may decide to vote for it. But at least they know it's here, and they have the information to be an informed voter.
Supervisor Shirley?
I just have a question. We're asking for 5,000 of fund balance, but if we're, we're looking to spend 15,000 to 20,000 in the line above it, where's the other 10,000 to 15,000?
Yeah, there's a budget line item that I currently have with $15,000. The mailer alone, though, is 16,000, so I do not have enough to do the mailer. So if you do not approve the extra funds, there'll be no mailer. We'll still continue to do the digital marketing, though.
Other comments, questions? All right, we're ready to vote on this resolution. Okay, that was a budget amendment, so that resolution fails. Okay. Aren't we lucky? We get to move on to department reports. Okay, county administrator is up first.
I can read the report to you guys, if you like. It's been a long night. The report is in your packet. The county does lots of great things, will continue to do so. If you have any questions on it, though, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, we're going to move on to corporation counsel.
In similar fashion, my report is also in the agenda packet at like page 712. So I will not read the entire thing. I just want to give a, a little bit of update about the CHIPS cases, the children in need of protection and services, since this board did agree to switch that caseload to Corp Counsel versus the District Attorney's Office. Officially, we started handling cases November 1st of 2023. There were 108 kids in out-of-home placement at that time. And as of March 1st, that number is now reduced to 75 kids in out-of-home placement. So we'll be, we were able to get permanents for 33 kids so far, and hopefully that number will continue to go down. Obviously, it may go up and down. But I just want to say thank you to the board for approving that CHIPS be handled by the Corp Counsel office, and we hope to continue to improve on those cases and reduce the number of kids in out-of-home placement.
Thank you. We all need good news. Okay, Audrey, did you hang with, oh, she did, there she is. Okay. Thank you.
Ken totally stole my thunder. I even have it. We accomplished a lot of great things this year. Cheater. But yeah, I won't keep y'all. I was, I did have things, but we don't, it's always in your packet. Was there any questions on anything HR-related?
Any questions for Audrey?
Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
So Audrey, again, I just want to compliment you on the work that you've been doing to update policies, redo some of them that were a little, eh, you know, questionable or very loose. So you've done a very good job of tightening the ship and making them, making the policies very clear. And so thank you for all your hard work on that. That's not something that just comes out of whim, so thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Supervisor Bernie. I think we all echo your thoughts. Thank you. All right, we're down to Finance Director Dustin, man of many words.
You know, I did have a lot to say. It was on my computer, but my battery's dead, so we'll keep it short. Yeah, the info's in your packets, if you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Dustin? All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, request for future agenda items, Supervisor Burning?
So I don't know if it's appropriate for us to do it at this one or post-election, but I'm assuming since the majority of this board is, the continuity of this board, for the most part, is going to remain the same moving forward, I found it to be appropriate to ask some of these question, or ask to have these at least put into committees, if you'd be so kind. So there's three things that I would like to take into consideration. The first one is exploring an ordinance of which, when we go to referenda for an operating levy override, that we explore a sunset provision be mandated on everyone. So I want an ordinance in discussion on that. Second, I would like another item, an ordinance when it comes to referenda in general, that we add more subject, or more topic, or more conversation on the topic prior to leading up to a vote to putting it on the ballot for people to have to decide. So I want a discussion on how long that should be in committee and whether or not we create an ordinance requiring that. And then the third thing I would like is to review the process of how we go and get a bond issued to borrow large amounts of money, because we have several projects looming at us on the KIP. So I want that on the agenda so that we can review that and go through it so that either new board members or the existing board can be reeducated on that. So I've said enough. We're all hungry. Thank you.
That's enough, thank you. Okay. Any correspondence from county clerk? The meeting for next week was established for Tuesday at 5:00. Okay, and, and I just want to add a quick comment, a clarification, if I may. It goes back to the January administration committee meeting. I think it's important when we talk about this process that we've gone, we've established, the reason that that resolution was tabled or postponed because it was flawed. Okay? And then the reason it didn't come up again in February because we had already planned to do the educational session at the March meeting. And then basically from there, what we have done is accelerated the process to make sure that we had the opportunity to address the issue yet this month before the election. So it's all part of this process, and we haven't done anything at all and attempted to delay, create any delays in this process. And I think it's worked its way just fine. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you all for listening. Wow. Guess what? We're adjourned.